Everyone, welcome to Oviedo City Hall. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Chief White, you would do us the honor of purpose, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Very good. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're mindful of the events that have occurred over the last 24 hours and we're certainly mourning for those losses and praying for those victims and the families and friends and coworkers. We just ask that you put your comforting arms around them at this difficult time. Lord, we're also reminded of the hurricane events that not only struck our state but tragically and very seriously affected Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands and other islands and regions as well. And, Lord, would you just help us get the necessary resources dispersed, as they should be, to these areas for recovery? Father God, we look tonight to recognize some of our newest public safety police officers. You would guide them in their professional careers and give them great protection and send them home safely to their families. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. All righty, it is Monday, October 2nd, 6:35 PM. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We have all members of council present. We have some ceremonial items to go through this evening, so we will start with new officer introductions and we'll turn it over to Chief Chudnow.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to call up our new three, our three new officers as they reluctantly come forward. I'm going to let the officers introduce themselves and give you a short 30-second blurb on themselves.
The elevator speech, we like it.
Good afternoon. My name is Leonardo Massif. I'm happy to be here. I was born and raised in Cuba. I came here in 2008, worked in the pest control landscape business. Then I became an American citizen, put myself through the academy, night class, worked and did the academy at the same time, graduated and came here to serve City of Oviedo.
You are awesome, man. Welcome.
Thank you.
That's a tough one to follow.
I know, right? Good evening. My name is Officer Charles Cazares. I recently graduated from the academy. I've lived, born and raised here in Florida. I know it's kind of hard to find sometimes. I spent about 10 years off and on in private sector security and decided it was time for a change and came to the public service, so thank you.
Oh, great. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mark McDaniel. I'm an Oviedo resident for the last 23 years. I recently retired from the Orange County Sheriff's Office and I'm looking forward to my new career here in Oviedo to serve the publics, the public and the residents in the city in which I live.
Well, welcome, man.
Thank you.
That's awesome. So, let's see now, I guess he's in charge of them. Is that it? Training them?
So, those are our new officers.
Well, Chief, we do appreciate everything that you do for us and, gentlemen, thank you for joining the City of Oviedo. Welcome to the family and like every member of council will tell you, we appreciate more than you'll ever know. Our citizens do as well. What you do for us each and every day and all we want you to do is go out there and be safe. So, thank you, guys. Somehow, it doesn't seem like Mr. McDaniel's been here 23 years. He's been my neighbor up the street, but doesn't quite seem that long, Mark. Well, council, if everybody can just join me down at the podium, please.
All righty, so we're going off-script a little bit because this one is not on the agenda and it was left off the agenda for a very good reason. Chief Chudnow came and joined us about 10 years ago as the City of Oviedo Police Chief and I don't think there's anybody in the audience who would say that the man hasn't done just an absolutely exceptional, incredible job. Everybody agrees? Give him a big round of applause. He's retiring as of Friday. It's his last day, so this is his last official council meeting as our chief. So, the council wanted to recognize him this evening. Chief, why don't you come on up here and join us? I see Cheryl, Mrs. Chief. There is no better Mrs. Chief in the world than Cheryl. So Cheryl, why don't you come on up here, too? Come on. I know, I'm going to embarrass you. That's what you get for giving me a beer Rita or whatever it was at the tailgate. So, Chief, we have this resolution for you that we wanted to present you this evening, so I'm going to read it and see if I can get through the whole thing. If I let Henkin read it, he'll cry. No, he will. Steve gets very emotional. This is, reads, "A resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Jeffrey Chudnow for his dedicated service to the citizens of Oviedo and hereby recognizing his retirement from public safety service." Now, folks, I'm going to read this slow because you've got to listen to some of these achievements in here. "Whereas Jeffrey Chudnow's law enforcement career spans 43 years." Do you think he deserves retirement? Forty-three years. "And he has earnestly and faithfully served the Oviedo Police Department since May 7, 2007, when he was appointed chief. Whereas throughout Jeffrey Chudnow's tenure as Chief of Police, his leadership and focus on crime prevention, community awareness, and other community policing activities has led to Oviedo being recognized as one of the safest and most secure cities in the region." But not only are we going to give him a round of applause, give the men and women of our police department a round of applause for that one. "Whereas Chief Chudnow consistently showed dedication to the citizens of Oviedo and Seminole County serving many community organizations such as the Central Florida Criminal Justice Association, Boys Town of Central Florida, Kids House of Seminole, Criminal Justice Advisory Board of Seminole State College, Oviedo Citizens in Action, and the Oviedo Historical Society. Whereas in honor of Chief Jeffrey Chudnow's retirement from public service, the Oviedo City Council encourages all of its citizens to always lock their vehicle doors and remove your valuables from sight and secure your garage doors and homes." There you go, Chief. That will forever be there for you. That's about your favorite line, isn't it?
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Also, we should mention that our police department has been accredited twice under your leadership?
Three times.
Three times under his leadership. Only 1% of all police departments across the country are ever accredited, guys, three times. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, the Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council acknowledge the faithful public safety service provided by Chief Jeffrey Chudnow. We commend him for his career as a member of the Oviedo Police Department. Be it further resolved that his retirement resolution be presented to Jeffrey Chudnow along with the sincerest, best wishes in your retirement. Presented the second day of October, Chief. It has my signature on it and the seal of the city along with Barbara's. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, the Chief is usually a man of few words, but I'm going to make him say something tonight, so. Mayor, I appreciate this. Now, I'm going to get emotional.
That's okay. Do it all the time.
Forty-three years, man. It's been an honor the last 10 years to serve the City of Oviedo, the citizens, and working with some of the finest law enforcement professionals in the state. Chief, thank you. Now, Mrs. Chief, you're going to have him home 24/7. How excited are you about that?
I got a job today.
You got a job today? Congratulations! That is awesome! You know what? When I started working out at home, that's what Debbie went and did. She went and got a job. She's like, "I'm going back to work. I can't be home with you all day." But, folks, I mean, this man has served us faithfully, unbelievably. Would any of the council members like to say anything while I have the mic here? Come on, you know you do.
Well, I won't get emotional because he already did it for me, but I've said, "This guy goes down in my book as the best police chief the city has ever seen. I've never seen anybody who is so dedicated to the city." I mean, when the cameras are off or he's not in uniform, he's always out doing something, so he will be sorely missed and there is big shoes to fill. So, I have a feeling he'll be around here still helping us out, so, Chief, enjoy your retirement. Well deserved.
You took community policing to a whole new level. I appreciate that. One of the most approachable people I've ever encountered in this role.
Keith?
Well, Chief, I want to wish you the best of luck in your future, whatever you decide to do, but I know you're not going anywhere, so football games, I'll see you at the Boys Town of Central Florida, Kids House, all those places. I know you're going to stick around. Good luck to you.
Importantly, though, we still have our parking spots for football games.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I've been here for a short period of time on council with you here, but I've worked with you over the last 10 years and every, I mean, you've always been there to help out, anywhere we need you in the community and I appreciate it. I know you'll still be there after you retire. Thank you.
Well, Chief, you're going to be missed. You know you're always loved. We know where you live, so don't go very far and I heard you're going on a beautiful retirement trip next year sometime, right?
That's true.
Well, you enjoy it. You deserve it. Congratulations.
Good job. That's super important.
All righty, guys, we're going to, we'll read the rest of them from up there for eight now. Yeah.
You know what, guys, we might as well stay down here. I'm sorry.
All righty, so we have some resolutions of recognition for a couple of folks in the audience here who did a, just do a tremendous job, especially helping us through Hurricane Irma. So, we're going to start with, let's start with Patty Salvatore. Patty, are you here? Come on up, please. Give her a round of applause because when I tell you where she's from, you'll really give us a round of applause. Patty is from Duke Energy and was our liaison directly to the City of Oviedo. In the City of Oviedo, we were very blessed. Even though some of us were without power for six or seven days, they got the majority of the city turned on very, very quickly. Our staff had a direct line of communication with not only your office but Alicia Gonzalez and we were able to give them areas that were out, not only here in our city, but on the outskirts of our city and they were most responsive to it. So Patty, I have a resolution for you from the City of Oviedo, a recognition of that. We do greatly appreciate it. It reads, "Whereas the City of Oviedo is proud to recognize Ms. Patty Salvatore for her service to our city. Whereas Patty Salvatore, Senior Account Executive at Duke Energy and a community leader in Seminole County, who has given her time and efforts to organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club." Do you know the chief from there?
Yes.
Oh, look at that. Awesome. All right, let me ask you something. When's it coming here to the City of Oviedo?
Ah.
Ah, see, they won't, they won't really talk about that, but they are working on one. "Whereas in the aftermath of Hurricane Irma, the City of Oviedo faced great challenges in the recovery process requiring round-the-clock work by city staff and private utility contractors. Whereas through coordinated effort, Ms. Patty Salvatore worked tirelessly with the city staff to return power to the citizens of Oviedo and aid in the swift recovery following the storm. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo that the Mayor and the City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby recognize Patty Salvatore for her dedication to our community, wish to convey our deepest and sincerest thanks for her support of the City of Oviedo. It's presented the second day of October 2017 and it bears my signature and the city seal." Thank you so much. We do greatly appreciate it.
Why don't we just huddle up because they're going to want to get a picture?
Now, did you get a picture earlier with the chief or did we forget to do that? Patty, do you want to say anything?
Well, I want to say it was teamwork, especially with Ben Williams and Chief White. If it weren't for those two, we would not have gotten as much done, restored as quickly as we did. And I told Chief White, those two gentlemen were the only municipality people throughout Seminole County that worked tirelessly, day in and day out. Honestly, I've worked with all the municipalities and Oviedo by far worked the hardest.
We do greatly appreciate that and, guys, that's just a testament to the team. You saw it a lot on social media where we kept saying how hard the team was working. Now you heard it right from the top. So Patty, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Give a big round of applause to everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, Ben, are you stand, are you in the back there? Ben, why don't you stand up and come here a second?
Oh, you already are.
Oh. Oh, Ben, are you going to take that? You know, Ben, you're former Air Force. What did he serve in? Anything?
Army.
Army, uh-oh. Army and Air Force here.
Still in the reserves, aren't you?
No? Yes, he did. Now, guys, I wanted to bring Ben up and just introduce him to everybody. Everybody knows Chief White. Everybody knows all the council members. Now everybody knows Patty. Nobody knows this man. This man, Ben, well, now stop. Now stop. Ben, you are, how long have you been an Oviedo citizen?
Seventeen years.
Right, seventeen years. How long have you worked for the city? As long as I've been here, I think.
I'm sorry, Oviedo citizen all my life.
Right, all your life, right? Seventeen years in the city, right? Born and raised here. Been with the city for 17 years. This is the man behind the scenes who gets everything done. When anybody sends us something about a streetlight being out, crack in the sidewalk, something like that, it goes to bang. Ben becomes the liaison to make sure it happens and it gets done. You don't see him very much. He's very behind the scenes. He wears a hat usually. He hides, kind of, drives around in his little pickup truck, but this is the man and, Ben, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Drew, you got a picture of all of them? All righty. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Patty. Diana, where are you? Come on up. How are you tonight? How many of you have watched on social media, Twitter, all of that, any of the videos from MyOviedoTV? Find them informative, of course. Diana Sakato is the one who makes all of that happen. Now, throughout the whole hurricane, obviously, we were pushing out a lot of social media. She contacted us, came down with her camera, with her equipment at the EOC and shot video to help us push information out to the public. She didn't ask for a penny, didn't ask for a dime. She just did it for the community. And she does it for the community all the time, so the least we can do is sit here and recognize Diana. So I have a resolution for you.
Thank you.
And it is a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Diana Sakato. "Whereas the City of Oviedo is proud to recognize Diana Sakato for her service to our city. Whereas Ms. Sakato is a native of Ecuador and an Oviedo resident who through OviedoTV works to ensure our citizens are informed and educated about current events. And whereas in the aftermath of Hurricane Irma, the City of Oviedo faced great challenges in the recovery process requiring round-the-clock work by city staff. And whereas through coordinated effort, Ms. Diana Sakato produced high-quality video public service announcements to inform the citizens of Oviedo and aid in the recovery following the storm. So now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida that the Mayor and the City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby recognize Diana Sakato for her dedication to our community and wish to convey our deepest and sincerest thanks for her support of the City of Oviedo. And this is presented the second day of October 2017. It does bear my signature and the city seal." Thank you so much. Don't cry. Don't cry.
Yeah, I really didn't expect this. I did because I love Oviedo and the only things I was doing is to inform the community what a great job you all do for the city. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Give her a big round of applause. Drew, let's get a, why don't we all huddle up a little?
Okay, Drew, let the professional photographer come in now. Kim is in the background.
Thank you so much, Diana. Give her a big round of applause, folks. I just have three more to go. Tonight is resolution night. As Chief White mentioned earlier, the island nations have been decimated by Hurricane Maria and the City of Oviedo was approached and we were asked if we would do resolutions in support of the devastating damage that was done on the islands and, of course, we would gladly do that. So, the first one I have here is for the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. Is there anybody in the audience who has family there who has been affected by it that wants to come up here and join us right now?
Everybody, everybody.
Come on, everybody, come on up. This is for you. Bring that up. How are you? Now, everybody, do you all have family still in Puerto Rico? Do you?
She's my daughter. Grandmother's in Puerto Rico.
Have you heard?
My brother got in touch with her and she still has no water or no light. The second floor and the roof blew half of it off and water destroyed most of her furniture.
Oh, my goodness. But you've heard from her and she's safe?
Yes, she's safe.
How about you? Family in Puerto Rico still?
Yeah, my mom.
Your mom?
My mom, still. Yeah, I finally heard from her last week and she's, she's in good spirits. We're going to be okay.
All righty, how about yourself? Family in Puerto Rico?
My father, my brother, my uncles, my aunts.
Have you heard from them?
I have heard from them. They're all surviving in their own description and in good spirits because they're all in the same situation and hoping for more aid and help.
This is the least that we can do. How about you? Do you have family at home?
I actually have a daughter-in-law who has all her family there and, of course, they're without power and so forth.
And she's heard from them?
But she has heard they're safe.
Good. How about you, dear?
I don't, but I have a lot of friends that do and I've heard that they're all safe and...
Good, that's what we like to hear. How about you, sir?
My aunt, my grandparents, my grandmother's still there, 90-year-old grandmother, so she's in San Juan, but, you know, spirits are good. Her house survived everything, but no water, power.
Oh, my goodness. So, her house survived, huh?
Yeah, I think a lot of cement structures in the metropolitan area survived it. It's the lack of water and electricity that's really the issue there. I mean, I have family members in the Condado area that, you know, new construction, impact-resistant windows didn't hold up. So there's, you know, there's a lot of talk about later on about like the construction codes, even at a Cat 5, you know. I mean, you got to...
Well, Cat 5 is devastating. How about you, sweetie? Do you have family still in Puerto Rico?
Sir, I have my grandma and my grandpa in Puerto Rico. They live in the Bayamón area, so they've been affected pretty bad, but...
You've heard from them?
I have heard from them. Yeah, they're okay, but, so that's good.
Excellent. How about you, ma'am?
Hi, no, I'm the advisor to the Hispanic Student Association of Seminole State. I'm here to support the community and we're all Puerto Ricans. We're all trying to help. We're doing a food drive at the college to take it to the agencies that are sending aid to Puerto Rico.
So, anybody in the audience who hears us tonight or is at home, they could bring food up to Seminole State College at which campus?
Here at the Oviedo campus, we have two boxes in building, in each building, in Old Twin Sanford. We have in all, on both campuses, so...
So, at both campuses, so if they came over to the Oviedo campus in the main building right up front, they'd be able to find where the drop-off points are? All righty, well, that is just exceptional. So let's give them all a round of applause before I read this. I couldn't imagine what it'd be like to have family that you can't get in touch with for probably days in most cases, right?
Yesterday was the first time I heard from my family.
Did you hear that, folks? What was that?
Yesterday was the first time I heard from my family.
Yesterday. Well, this piece of paper that we have is hardly anything that would put, make that feel better, but it's the least that we can do. So let me read this and then, food drive over at Seminole State College. And they need more than food and water, though, right? What are you looking for?
Right now, there are anything that is related, medical equipment, anything that is related to medicine and first aid and then canned goods, diapers, kids' diapers, adult diapers and...
Everything.
Everything, really, because the situation is very critical.
Did you have anything to add to it? Because I heard you were rattling off a lot of things there.
No, it was just...
Oh, okay, you were just helping her out. Well, that was good. All righty, this is entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Oviedo," and it's a...
I've got a...
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I've been in contact with other people. They're also looking for infant formula and powder and tarts because there are homes that are not fully destroyed where they're trying to keep those people at home as best they can and they need massive amounts of tarps so that they can have some kind of roof while aid gets to them and they get rebuild the house.
So we can bring these over to Seminole State College and then you all have some kind of direct pipeline to get all of this over there.
Batteries and battery-operated fans. I mean, when you're looking at a six-month stint without power, a lot of these people are trying to find batteries to run small fans. I mean, here in Florida, if you really think about, I mean, D-batteries, because if you're looking out there really what these, if you find a battery-operated fan, it's D-batteries that they use. It's, I mean, we live in Florida and it's pretty hot. Imagine where you're in the Caribbean and you're two, three months without AC in your house, you know, people in high-rises and there's no power. I mean, outside of having to walk up 21 flights in the, you know, hot, nice stairwells to get to your condo. I mean, it's interesting situations.
We can't even imagine. Jeez. All righty, "Resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida in support of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. Whereas the City of Oviedo in the spirit of unity and compassion desires to offer our heartfelt support to the citizens of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. And whereas the citizens of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico are natural-born citizens of the United States of America and in our close proximity to the state of Florida. And whereas throughout the recovery from Hurricane Irma, Floridians and the citizens of Oviedo join together to strengthen the bonds of community, helping our neighbors in the recovery effort. Whereas the effects of Hurricane Maria are so widespread that Puerto Rico's entire power system was knocked out, countless homes were destroyed and American lives were lost. Whereas in the aftermath of Hurricane Maria, the City of Oviedo stands with our neighbors in the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. And whereas the City of Oviedo City Council encourages all of its citizens to assist our island neighbors and ensure families and loved ones are able to receive the help they desperately need. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo that the Mayor and the City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby offer our heartfelt support to the citizens of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico the second day of October 2017." I'm going to present it to Seminole State, so perhaps you can hang that by Fritzar here over in Oviedo and that would be terrific. And, guys, God bless you all. Give them all a round of applause. Drew, you want to get a, let me sneak in here. Can you get a big group shot, guys? Does anybody want to add anything? No? Yeah, oh, of course you can. No worries.
We're also, in addition to them, there's also a location here in Oviedo, is Candoor Dental. We've been also collecting, they're charting something more private, if you will, and they're bringing it to the churches, the local churches over there and they're distributing to local people, so...
Yeah, we are going to, you can do that, too, if you'd like.
La oficina de Candoor Dental en aquí en Oviedo está al lado del...
La oficina de Cando Dental en aquí en Oviedo está al lado del salón de belleza se llama Mary Lee Monroe. Ellos están colectando por las diásporas de Puerto Rico y ellos coletan todo tipo de artículos. Es una empresa, no es una empresa, es una comunidad privada. Se está proveyendo iglesias particulares en la isla. Ellos van a distribuir personalmente a otras personas que no necesariamente están en el área de San Juan.
Thank you. And I was just gonna say, what would be a great idea is if you could email us here at City Hall tomorrow. Perhaps you can go online, all of our email addresses are there. Send us the pickup points and give us some highlights of what you're looking for and where people can drop off, excuse me, and we'll get them up on the city website and have on social media so that way when residents see this tonight, they'll know where they can go for help. Folks, one last big round of applause for them and thank you so much for coming down. Thank you. No, thank you. Good luck, guys. My pile is getting smaller. I'm gonna read that one, Drew. I might, I'll read that one for the day later. As Chief White mentioned, it wasn't only the island of Puerto Rico, but also the U.S. Virgin Islands. Is there anybody here from Virgin Islands? Come on up. How are you? Well, I'm gonna read this resolution and I know you said you had some handout sheets for everybody, so I'll let you speak after I'm done. Tonight's "Resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida," and it is a resolution in support of the residents and citizens of the United States, U.S. Virgin Islands. Whereas the City of Oviedo in the spirit of unity and compassion desires to offer our heartfelt support to the citizens of the United States, Virgin Islands, and whereas citizens of St. Croix, St. Thomas, St. Johns, the U.S. Virgin Islands, are natural-born citizens of the United States of America and are in close proximity to the state of Florida, and whereas throughout the recovery from Hurricane Irma, Floridians and the citizens of Oviedo join together to strengthen the bonds of community, helping our neighbors in their recovery effort. Now, here's the kicker about the Virgin Islands. The effects of Hurricane Irma and Maria, they got hit twice, were so widespread that all of the U.S. Virgin Islands saw significant structural damage and flooding, most substantially in St. Thomas. Power systems were damaged, countless homes were destroyed and American lives were lost. Whereas in the aftermath of the hurricanes Irma and Maria, the City of Oviedo stands with our neighbors in the United States, Virgin Islands, and whereas the City of Oviedo City Council encourages all of its citizens to assist our island neighbors to ensure families, loved ones are able to receive the help they desperately need. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, the Mayor and the City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community hereby offer our heartfelt support to the citizens of the United States, Virgin Islands. Again presented this second day of October 2017. It is signed and sealed and, Damaris, I will give this to you to hang on to. Give them a round of applause. Damaris has made a list and I'm gonna let her tell you what they really need because she has a list of stuff here. I'll turn it over to you. Now, you were born there.
I was born in Puerto Rico and I still have family in Puerto Rico, but I was raised in St. Croix. Okay, so just real quick, I have a couple flyers to pass out. My law firm... Thank you. My law firm, together with the Rotary Club of Oviedo, we've come up the board, I'm on the board there, and we've come up with some decisions. One of those decisions was made at the last board meeting to have members donate to the Rotary Club of San Juan and the Rotary Club of St. Croix, and the club has agreed to match those member donations up to $2,500. So those two clubs will be receiving funds and this is a district-wide thing. So Rotary Club of San Juan will be getting a significant sum from Rotary here in this district. My law firm... Whoops.
I don't know if it's active, buddy.
My law firm is collecting supplies together with the Rotary Club and all of those supplies will be directly distributed to the Rotary Club of St. Croix for direct distribution to residents. So if anyone wants to donate, office, which is at the address listed on the form, or you can give me a call and we can schedule alternative times for drop-off.
Can you sell that information to us as well? We'll get it up on the website.
Absolutely.
All righty, well, great. Thank you for coming down this evening, Damaris, and I hope family's all okay there? Because you have some family that's still there, right?
There's a family there, yeah. The roofs are gone. I think they fared, St. Croix fared much better than Puerto Rico and St. Thomas, St. Thomas's entire streets, so...
All right, give them all a round of applause, folks. Thank you.
I think that's true, so people didn't get them, they're in a little wooden box up there.
All righty, Councilmember Sladek told me that in the little wooden box on the way out, there are more of the forms of the needed items and how to get them to them. So right where Drew is standing, there's a box on the wall. You can get one of those on the way out. Well, I think that is the end of the resolutions because the last one I can read from up there. All righty, so let's all get back up on the desk. Thank you, Patrick.
All righty, our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for September 7th and 18th. Both of those were regular sessions, sessions, excuse me. Like to entertain a motion, do so?
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item for public comment, I do have two written requests this evening for public comment. The first one is from Rosa Ray. Just need you to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Rosa Ray. I live at 680 Holly Springs Terrace, that's in Oviedo, Florida, but it's in Oviedo Forest subdivision. Okay. I'm a resident there. I'm also vice president of our HOA. So I'm coming to the council tonight, just wanted to let you know, I realize the devastation we've all heard about just even before all of this and we're very fortunate just in our area of just the lack of things that did occur, but we did have some. We, I believe we're in Zone 5, I'm not sure, y'all can check up on that, but the way I understand it, we have 197 homes in our area, 125 are behind the gate. And so that's why I'm coming to you. I had heard that FEMA was not going to be, would not help with our situation.
The City of Oviedo is going to help with your situation.
Thank you. I did see, mayor, I did see what you wrote and I appreciate that so much. I just was hoping there was a plan because I, like I say, I believe we're in Zone 5 and I had heard, I don't know if it's correct, it might be four months or whatever, and we have such mess on our property and its private, you know, so therefore I'm just asking, I know y'all have an enormous task, I really truly do.
Well, Rosa, on your note, when you're done, I'll go to the city manager and we'll get an update because they just had an update from about 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Awesome.
Well, why don't you finish and then we'll get...
And I just didn't know, I was hoping the plan was in place or y'all would be working on that because the republic, I have noticed them going by and they keep on driving by and I'm waiting on Friday every day to hopefully, they'll take just a little bit if we see it shrinking, that would help.
You should see the pile in front of my house still.
Well, the sad part is, it's not even my debris, it's my neighbors who had to take over into my yard, too. He's got his yard filled and he came over into mine, so... But I'm speaking for the whole community and it just needs some attention and I know everyone has that, but behind the gates FEMA doesn't even consider helping, so just wanted to address that.
As I said, Rosa, that was a perfect lead-in because...
Okay, good.
Why don't I have Mr. Cobb give us a brief update and I think the citizens will be happy to hear.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Cobb, do you mind?
No, actually Chief White's gonna have...
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, chief. As many of you know, Chief White is also our EOC director, so... Now, Chief White has a countdown clock for retirement as well, folks, so I think we should just give everybody a big boo and say, "Both chiefs can't leave."
I'll be just as...
I don't know if your wife, Gail, would be happy if we say that.
Yeah, probably not.
Definitely Cheryl would have been, but...
I'm sure I'll be just as emotional as he was, too. Yes, and FEMA doesn't actually coordinate debris cleanup. We have as part of our comprehensive emergency management plan, a debris management plan. It's endorsed and approved by the state of Florida, Emergency Management Debris Program. What we do with that is structure ourselves for the best cost-recovery options. Typically FEMA does not provide reimbursable funding for private roads and private gated communities, with some exceptions. We were successful in 2004 with three hurricanes to recover funds in private gated communities. So there's pretty good evidence that we think we might be able to, depending on how we engage services in there. But it has always been our position that we were going to clean those streets, no matter what. These are citizens of our town, they just happen to be behind a gate, we always felt compelled that that was the right thing to do. So it's not that we're putting them off, we are working with their management companies and HOA boards and so forth to get a very important document, and that's a right-of-entry document and a hold harmless that FEMA definitely has to have in place if we have a chance to get. So we've gotten seven back so far, Patrick.
Since we have Oviedo Forest here, do we have one from Oviedo Forest, do we know?
Patrick will look it up. He's been coordinating those efforts for us as we speak and as of today, we're up to about seven, so... Okay, it may have went to your management company. Yeah.
Just coordinate with Patrick before you leave, let's make sure we have that on the list.
Yeah. As, since I'm here and I'll just go ahead and give you a brief update on debris operations.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make this a Reader's Digest version since a lot on the agenda tonight. We've been engaged in debris operations for 15 days now. We've collected 6,000 cubic yards, had over 274 citizen drop-offs at our debris site. We began burn operations, over 500 city streets sustained substantial amount of debris. We had awarded a bid, our contractor is DNJ, we have other successful contractors that are part of that bid, they fall into a second and third category. We have agreements with two of them, the third we do not. It was a little slow beginning in the process and staying in conformance with FEMA's debris guidelines. As you know, we experienced something we never, ever would have anticipated and that's a lack of resources throughout the state, much of which is in Texas. So we immediately implemented another plan. We augmented with city staff from both public works and recreation and parks. They've been on the street six days a week ever since we started this. Their program actually has been extremely successful, what they have delivered and brought to our site as well. We began to lose truck resources to some mostly South Florida municipalities and large county governments that have decided not to stay within the FEMA guidelines and are paying exorbitant amounts of money for debris cleanup, up to $30 a cubic yard is what we're being told. In fact, today, and Lonnie could probably opine on this, too, the Attorney General's Office has given a little guidance that some of this activity is considered inappropriate at best and there may be some future repercussions for that for some of these folks behaving this way. So we're getting the right-of-entry permits in place for the gated communities. What is our plan for the future? DNJ is our contractor, we want to keep them engaged. They are also our site contractor doing burn operations. That's gonna save us a substantial amount of money, somewhere between $400,000 and $600,000 we'll save if we continue to burn on our site versus chipping it and taking it off-site to the county landfill. We are now engaging conversations with the second contractor, CRS, who we believe this weekend, or at least by Monday, can ramp up with some additional clam trucks and hauling equipment. City crews will continue their operations. We are considering implementing a trailer crew that can go around and potentially start collecting the wood fencing all over town. We've already mapped out the city, we know where all of that is. Kudos to the sanctuary in Livock who do not have wood privacy fences in there. I love them right now because it is everywhere. Unfortunately, we can't burn the wood privacy fencing. It has materials in it that are non-permissible for burning. We're also in conversation, have been working with Republic Services to see how we might use them and looking at their pricing structure. Mr. Cobb has had some success in lowering some of the costs from the first talks. And we will be meeting this week, potentially tomorrow with Budget Tree Services, talk a little bit about their capabilities and their pricing structure as well and maybe get them engaged as well. That might be outside the FEMA parameters for reimbursement, but we just might need it at this time, simply because of the volume. So Zone 1 is definitely the hardest hit, it always is and always will be in this community. That's the northwest quadrant and we're still clearing the streets and picking up there. We saw some low-hanging fruit in debris 4 zone, which is everything east of the river and as of today, that's finished. The first pass is done. We don't anticipate a large second pass need in that area. Now, with additional resources, we're gonna carefully allocate city crews, but we want to try to multifaceted approach globally from the outside radius, working towards the inside of the city, and we think that'll be a pretty good plan of attack, so...
And chief, just so folks understand, the zones are just identifying the different areas of the city.
Correct.
It's not necessarily the numerical order that you're doing it in because the order you're doing it in is where the need is the most.
Yes, the need is the greatest and I wish I could show them pictures of some of the hardest-hit zones and that gets you a little more appreciation for some of the less impacted areas and, trust me, I know, it's very discouraging that your grass is dying under some of this stuff and it's a mess out there and, you know, the holiday seasons are upon us and I can tell you, we're working as long, as hard, as fast, but as safely as we can as well. We don't want people to get hurt while we're doing this, so that's it.
Council, have any questions for the chief? Good job, chief.
We'll get there.
Mayor, if I could add one thing, we were able to obtain a letter from the Health Department that is a significant form that we need to assist us with going into the private communities. The Health Department helps us declare the health need for us going in there and so we were able to get the letters as well. Grab them.
Well, it's good to hear.
Chief, while you're up there, I know we paid homage to one chief and I'm just gonna pay and I think everybody will agree to you. Folks, this gentleman sat in that EOC in the worst weather, didn't go home for 20 days in a row or even longer and I actually said it before the storm, we were at an event together and I knew what was coming and I said, "We will be in good hands." And chief, we were in, not good hands, we were in outstanding, exceptional hands and what a great job. And I think everybody appreciates what's going on and the city staff that is going out to augment the contractor, those guys are incredible. I saw them in action today and I mean, they are just incredible. So chief, you give yourself, give the chief a round, I mean, he really...
I'll only accept that on behalf of the entire team because it's not a one-man band in disaster operations, it is...
Agreed, 100% chief. Well, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Did he mention the drop-off points, Evan?
No, he did not, if you'd like to.
You know, I took about a dozen pickup truck loads of stuff out of our front yard and neighbors' yards and it was kind of an interesting experiment because I just started picking stuff up and putting in a truck. Before it was over, I had four neighbors out there and we decided to do the whole street. And the next day, the neighbors whose stuff we picked up went down the street further, picked up their neighbor's stuff. And by the end of the weekend, we had most of the stuff out except for a big section of fence, but on Evans Street at the public work site, there's a big field where you can bring your debris as well as your branches and landscaping stuff.
Fences, too, I think.
Fences, too. I brought a section of fence down there, so it's not very crowded, you don't have to stand in line. I was gonna put on Facebook to challenge everyone with a pickup truck to take two loads down there and I think we'd have the city cleaned up pretty quick, but a lot of those pickup trucks are nicer looking than the one I have, so I can understand that. But it is convenient, so if you have the opportunity, take advantage of that.
And it's free. Free, free, free. Take your stuff down in the pickup trucks, free.
And I believe it's open seven days a week, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., correct, chief?
Yes.
Joseph, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.? Do you have anything to add for us, Joseph?
No.
Nope? All right. Now, I won't point out to anybody that that's the man who's really responsible for picking up the garbage, so if it hasn't been picked up, go see him. But don't worry, Joseph, I'm going to give them all your cell phone number. Anything else on debris pickup? Nope? All righty, so we'll go back into public comments. I have a written request from Mr. H. Alexander Duncan. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
H. Alexander Duncan, PO Box 620092.
We actually need an address, I'm sorry.
I just said, that's what I said.
No, no, and a physical address is what the clerk has asked me to get.
No, well, look, I do a lot of public work, so I don't give out my physical address, so I'm just going to give out the address I use. So do you want it?
Mr. Group, what say you?
I think the gentleman can still speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go right ahead. PO Box, and it is.
Mr. Group, how you doing? I just wanted to talk about annexation. Obviously, we don't got a lot of time to talk about it with three minutes, but I'm pretty sure Megan remembers, city limits are a bit different than the rest of you guys, as I do. There are a lot of new residents continuously moving in Oviedo, and there are a lot of residents who've been here since the '90s, so, you know, they have a bit of a different outlook on it as well. There are a lot of residents in rural Chuliyota that fears further annexation by the city towards them, and, you know, I know after I sit down, and, you know, later on, you guys will have a lot of good things to say that makes it sound reassuring to residents that that's not happening, but I will assure you today, you know, we can go through that and show where annexation across this county, not just Oviedo, but we're here to talk about Oviedo, has just continuously spread, reducing any separation between, say, Jamestown and the city that used to be Slavia, or between Chuliyota and the city which used to be Taintsville. Okay, so we can go through the laws, and we can go through, Stetson University even has a very compact, easy-to-read packet for citizens to understand annexation. And even if you just Google, I just did it the day before I walked in, if you just Google, you'll find some of lands in Chuliyota that border Oviedo now are residential lands, but they're owned by companies, or shell companies, which then legally can apply for annexation into the city, further driving, you know, annexation towards Chuliyota. So all I would ask for is that the city of Oviedo maybe start being a little bit more open with annexation, because I went through the Seminole County Comprehensive Vision 2020 Plan. Of all the cities that was listed with annexation as something to address, Oviedo was the only one listed as excellent in that category. Longwood, Alzamont, they were all given satisfactory ratings, and this is county records now, so it's not just pulled out of thin air. This is something the city has participated in, and so I would just like it to be more public and addressed in a more, I don't want to say truthful, because then it's kind of like I'm saying you guys are lying, but a more open and transparent way for not only the citizens of Oviedo, but the surrounding communities of Oviedo, which annexation and urban sprawl, water usages, and other such things are worried about. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
When was the last time we annexed any land outside of the Rural Charter Amendment to our east?
We've never annexed rural lands, sir.
No. Rural Charter Amendment passed in 2004 by the residents of Seminole County?
Correct.
Okay, see, that's what I'm saying. How you're playing when you know the original charter and comprehensive plan for rural east boundaries started in the 90s, so when you're talking about 2004, there's a difference between the comp plan and the charter plan, there's a difference in the combination of the 91 amendment passed by voters and the referendum in 2004.
Oh, thank you, Miss-
I hope you can go through this.
Right, why don't you have a seat, so you had your three minutes. We do appreciate your comments, but now it's our turn.
Okay.
Mr. Cobb, can you address that?
Yes, sir. The reason, at least, it's sort of comforting that we were rated excellent. I think the reason we were rated excellent is because we were the one city that actually entered into a joint planning agreement with Seminole County when they first started talking about it in the late '90s, when they first started talking about preservation of the rural boundary, or the rural area at that time, is what it was called. Didn't really become a rural boundary until about 2004, when the referendum occurred. The city itself, in its own comprehensive plan, has had policies in its land use settlement since, I know at least, well, I came here in 1995, so I know at least since 1997, that where the city actually stated in policy that it would do what it needed to do to protect the rural boundary. The city's annexation program has since, at least since I've been here, has always been one in which the property owner petitioned the city. The annexations have always occurred within the urban boundary, and that is the boundary that was the urban boundary in 1994, as well as in 2004. So, you know, that's the one thing that we have been, I believe, at least I can stand up and say that we've been good stewards regarding that. We've even, like with, you mentioned sanctuary, Mayor. You remember back when the sanctuary was being first proposed, that we'd actually developed a special land use designation that would transition from the more urban style of community through this low-density residential transitional, which is what we called it, that was in between that and Willingham Road. And so we've also, like I said, the joint planning agreement was extended twice. It wasn't until after the rural boundary was adopted that the county decided that the joint planning agreement wasn't needed anymore. And so we have, but we still respect the county's wishes regarding the rural boundary. We understand that even if the city did annex any lands within the rural boundary, the county would still control the land use designations for that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Cobb. And I hope the justice, the residents concerned, because the city has been great stewards. And as mentioned, we were the only city to actually pass a resolution in support of the Rural Charter Amendment back in 2004, even though we kind of drew a line in the sand around us and agreed to make Oviedo the urban side of the line, because that's where all the infrastructure was, as opposed to annexing out, as we were doing at some one point in time. But thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Can I just add on to that? You know, because I hear the concern here, Mr. Alexander's voice, and I'll just tell you, I speak more in layman's terms, so people can get it, but I can tell you, as long as I sit here, I have no intention, and I would think that my colleagues would agree, to ever go annex into Chuliyota. There has to be, you know, some sort of contrast between city-urban. Unfortunately, what most people don't realize, you know, Oviedo is the first city outside that urban boundary, so, you know, they see some of the growth, which, by the way, the big growth that we have here in the city, Oviedo on the park, most people don't realize, is that's a voter-approved thing before most of us got here, and now we're forced to manage it, so. But, you know, for the people that live to our east in Chuliyota and up through Geneva, I can tell you what, I mean, I don't care what comes to me personally, I speak for myself now, I would never, ever vote to that. I have a city that is a great city, and we're managing it well, but the concern is well-taken, Duncan. I mean, I hear where you're going, but I don't think you have to worry about that with that group. Chuliyota's beautiful, Geneva's beautiful, all that area up there, and we got enough on our plate here to manage, and if you all just be patient, it's going to come out really good in Oviedo, and you're all going to get through, and things are going to be good. So thank you for that, appreciate it.
All righty. That is the end of the written request. Do I have anybody else in the chambers who would like to address counsel at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of our meeting, and we are going to move on to the consent agenda, which is items number 7 through 19. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy-
I'd like to make a motion to approve 7 through 19, the full consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion second. Deputy Mayor, anything?
No, sir, all of them.
Councilmember Britton?
It looks good. I'd just like to point out the texting while driving resolution, and remind folks that that's not a safe thing to do. I saw someone the other day typing on a computer while we were driving, so let's be cognizant of that.
Thank you. Bob?
Looks good.
Councilmember Slater?
On item number 17, the fee schedule, I had a question on the 5th grade dance fee. It went from $10 to $25, and I know that's really popular in our city, and we want to recover some of what we spend. Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Ms. Willer will explain. Item 18, administrative fee?
17.
My agenda says 18.
Oh, is it 18? Maybe it is, yeah, it's item, no, it's item 17.
It doesn't matter, we know which one you're talking about.
18.
We condensed the number of dances that we had held in the past, so, and we moved all of our dances to Center Lake Park. We made them more specialty dances, like father's-daughter dance, and year-ending dances, and things like that. So in the process of that, we've had so many people who have, you know, been attending our dances and everything, and we hadn't raised our fees in quite a little while. The reason the fee increased, as we did across the board with a lot of our fees, is to increase, you know, in totality, I should speak, say, across the board, and that was just one of them that we increased.
Is there a way that we could include everybody who wants to go to that by just spilling out into the lawn?
No.
Why? Is it making it an exclusive event? That just, it rubs me the wrong way.
Well, I mean, you know, when we started the dances, it wasn't so much that, you know, it's one of those things, our facilities are not large enough to facilitate every child in 5th grade. I mean, the schools do not do their own, they have started, some of them have started doing some stuff, but they haven't, they routinely don't do their own dances. You know, with the number of schools that we have in our area, it's just almost impossible to facilitate. In our dances, one of the reasons we kind of went to specialty dances, because we've actually, in the past, had them on a routine basis, and they would sell out, and then all of a sudden, we started having drops in some of them, so we condensed them down to make them more of a specialty dance, so they kind of are special. Increased the fee, of course, a little bit to do that. It's almost impossible for us to try to accommodate everybody. It's just too, it's just too many kids.
So for the father-daughter dance, for example, that would be $50 for the dad to take the daughter, or is it 25 and you get, both of them get to come?
I believe it's 25, it's just for the, yeah.
For both of them?
Yeah, it's $25 for each child, yeah.
Okay, so this is something you go to without the parent?
No, the parent goes with them, but I do believe within the father-daughter dance, that's the fee. The parent comes with the daughter.
Okay, so two people, one fee of 25.
The raise of the fee for all of our specialty dances is directly related to the children attending the dances.
Okay, I'm still not totally understanding it.
I'll double check to make sure I'm correct on that, but I do believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Drew, one thing with the dances, because you and I had this discussion about using the outdoor area at Oviedo on the park, is that once you have the children there, you're responsible for them.
Yeah, it's hard to control if you, I mean, we've, you know, over the years-
You can't have them running around the park.
No, we've had dances in the pool area and things like that. We've always, and when we did them at Riverside, we have to keep them in a controlled environment, because we, once the kids get there, we're in charge of the children. So if we open it up, it's a little bit harder to control, we'd have to have more staff to control them. So, you know, that's why we try to do everything inside, within the, you know, facilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to say one thing. Last year, the 5th grade prom was awesome at Oviedo on the park and at the facility there. Your staff did an excellent job, and as well as, I heard, you know, from a lot of people that went online and bought their tickets online.
Yep.
Because my oldest son was in 5th grade, I sat there-
Yes, I didn't get any complaints. I should get that.
I'm glad, Mayor.
I sat there at like 5 o'clock in the morning, and I started waiting for those tickets. And it was, it was so much better this year with the online. Everybody, everybody seemed to be able to get the tickets. If they got, if they were trying to get them that day or that morning, at least they were able to get them. So I think it's a, it's a great job. And that facility, I believe, holds more than, than where the other-
It does. That's one of the reasons, I mean, Mayor actually has, you know, we've had many discussions about dances over the year, you know, years, and one of the things we did do was go online. It has made it more, you know, feasible knowing for that, for also our aquatic signups for our swim lessons and things like that. We've had in the past, you know, parents camp out, you know, early morning till signups, so it has made it a lot more, you know, better for our public and the community.
My wife was one of those people, camping out. Yes?
Thank you.
Just a quick thing, Drew, you were good, just something else. Just to piggyback on Councilman Britton, Chief Chudnow, I noticed your last meeting, and tonight, if you notice, number 19 was something that Chief Chudnow works very hard on, is the texting while driving. I mean, it really is not a good thing to do. You see it all the time, you can always see the telltale signs. But Chief, just want to let you know, we won't drop the torch. You know, the legislature's got it, and you won't be here, but I will be all over that, because you and I have talked a lot about it. That aggravates me so much that, you know, just put the phones down, you know, and we won't drop that. We'll get it through for you.
Thank you, Drew.
I know you won't. Good for you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Metro Plan also has a similar resolution to the legislature's on texting while driving. I'm going to count on them. All righty, anything else on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, could we pull that one off and vote on it separately?
Doesn't sound like anybody wants to do that.
All right.
All righty, so I'm going to call the vote. The consent agenda is items 7 through 19. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Motion carries. So you're against texting while driving, purchasing-
No, I'm against just one, but you wouldn't let me pull it, man.
Just vote for it, then. Make your point. All right, public hearings. We're up to number 20, Resolution 3477-17. Give me just a moment, let me catch up there. Number 22, here we go. All righty. This is Resolution number 3477-17. It's the approval of the certificate of vesting for Oviedo Pharmacy and Drug Store. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a certificate of vesting for a property located at 784 South Central Avenue. The purpose of the certificate of vesting is to determine whether the property, property owner may develop the property with a use that is prohibited under the current zoning district. In order to successfully assert the vested rights, the property owner must prove that there is clear and convincing evidence of certain criteria. The proposed pharmacy and drug, the property owner has submitted the application and asserts that the proposed pharmacy and drugstore use is vested against the land development regulations, which would prohibit such uses as proposed. Mr. Group reviewed the application and has provided certain findings and determinations for you, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Group and let him present that part of the certificate.
Thank you.
Mr. Group? Mr. Mayor, members of council, the test for vested rights is whether a property owner in good faith relies upon an act or omission of government and makes such a substantial change in position or incurs such extensive obligations that it be unfair or unjust, and unjust, to deny the use of the property as was, as the entitlement was prior to the act of government. The property owner here, on June 1st, purchased the subject property. On September 7th, the city of Oviedo enacted ordinance number 1655, which, and I'm going to say you took it away, but you really didn't, because the legislature sort of boxed you in, which, as a result of legislative action relating to medical marijuana dispensaries, the city commission and the city council enacted ordinance number 1655 to adjust the zoning districts in which pharmacies were allowed. On June 1st, when the property owner purchased the property, pharmacies were allowed in that zoning district. On September 7th, when the ordinance 1655 came into, went into effect, that right went away. The legal test that I just described to you, in my judgment, and obviously is subject to, you know, to your validation, would meet that test, because on June 1st of 2017, there was an investment, it was made in good faith, it was based upon a reliance of government, and I wouldn't, and that's what I'm saying, not just you all, but the Florida legislature, who kind of boxed local governments in, and every, local governments had to react to that. So in my judgment, the vested rights- that. So, in my judgment, the vested rights theory is sustained. However, I also think that it's reasonable to put conditions on that vested rights determination. And meeting with staff, and who concurs in this analysis, by the way, the recommended conditions are that a certificate of occupancy be obtained within a year, that the property not be used as a drive-through, that the property not be used for a medical marijuana dispensary, and the fourth one was... I think that's it, isn't it? Yes. So, those are the, those are the conditions that would be recommended to go along with the award of vested rights status. So, it wouldn't be an award that is in perpetuity. It would put the onus on the property owner to develop the property as was stated to be the intention of the property owner, in terms of a pharmacy. And, yeah, I stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. I do have one written request to speak, and that is from Mr. Tasman.
Oh, I know what the other condition was. It's important. That the, that the property be developed in conformity with the architectural standards and other land development regulations of the city.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Ian Tasman. Just name and address for the record.
Ian Tasman, 5900 Dean Road.
Great. Well, we know, right?
Thank you all very much for taking the time again to review this. Mr. Groot, thank you as well for reviewing. Just a quick little comment. I don't know if I'm able to be up here while you guys are discussing or answering any questions that you may have, but I am here to clarify anything that you may want to ask. The only, the major issue that we have with, not an issue, but the only question that I have, or request, with the conditions that have been presented, is to get the timeline that we have extended from one year to two. As a mom-and-pop pharmacy, our resources are not as vast as it would be for a massive building contractor, something to get everything underway. Any sort of small delay, we have to go through the FDOT. We have to go through St. John's Water Management. We have to go through the City of Oviedo, Seminole County, State of Florida. Deviations, anything that could possibly hold us up, that may seem small, could take a long time. We have to hire more engineers, architects, to get everything kind of rolling. Things have kind of stood still as we were waiting, excuse me, for this, this resolution and everything to kind of figure out what was going on. So, if you guys could extend that timeline for us, that would be, that's pretty much our main request at this point.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we have any questions, we'll call you. That was the only written request I had for this item. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pollak.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3477-17, with all the conditions that are presented here, with the exception of changing the one year to two years.
Second that.
I have a motion to second. Mr. Pollak?
We heard you. We understand your situation, and I truly feel for your situation. And I, it was a situation I would not want to have been in. It was mainly because of what the legislators, legislators did to us, that caused us this. And I'm for the project. I think it'll do well there.
Great. Councilmember Slater?
I would, as many of you know, have preferred a different way to reach the end result, but this is as good as it gets. Do want to ask Mr. Groot one question, though. If they use this as a pharmacy for some time, then they use changes, will this rendering of the vested rights certificate allow it at a later date to go back to a pharmacy?
That's a good question. I think there is a potential to abandon the vested rights. So, but it'd be so fact-intensive to, I couldn't tell you for sure 100% right now. I don't mean to be wishy-washy. It's just, I think it can be abandoned. I think you can abandon a vested right, whether it means leaving, abandoning it for six months or six years. Somewhere along the line, you can abandon a vested right.
Well, if the motioner would be amenable to it, I'd love to include something there that, in perpetuity, that could be a use that is okay on this particular parcel.
Repeat that? I'm not-
If, if they start up the pharmacy business, and for whatever reason, and I wish you all the very best of luck, but if for some reason it does not work out, and somebody else wants to come in and do a pharmacy, and it has sat idle and some condition has not been met, I'd like it to truly attach to the land, that this, to this particular parcel, that it could be used as, well, I guess we're, yeah, it does need the conditions because of the medical marijuana issue.
Right.
Yeah. So, can all the conditions also be attached to the land in perpetuity? I'm thinking of another situation in town where there was a pharmacy, the pharmacy has left, and we changed where the pharmacies would be allowed last season, potentially based on where that pharmacy was, over in East Hardware Plaza. You kind of get what I'm saying on this?
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't want that similar situation to happen. Say, they get it started, and it's operating as a pharmacy, and then they leave, and, you know, if somebody else wants to come in and it's sat idle for a time, let somebody else come in.
I would make a suggestion. I'd let the rest of the council speak before you start amending that.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, on this property, I mean, I agree the vesting rights for the current applicant, because that was a tough situation for you guys. You know, we changed the zoning, and you guys were involved. But I would be more comfortable that if their situation doesn't work out, that someone else has to follow the law that's on the books. We're doing this because, honestly, I feel the timing for them was terrible. They should be able to go out and do their, their business. But, you know, we did pass where pharmacies can go, so they're a special case. So, I don't see why someone who's not even in this process and has fought as hard as these folks do should have that, that right. They got to follow the, the new law that's on the books. That's, that's my case. But I, I'm in favor of their vesting.
Councilman Britton?
That's pretty close to the mark, where I feel we didn't create this problem for you, but we're going to try to help you out with it. Personally, I thought the one-year CO was reasonable, but it looks like, you know, I'm willing to compromise on that. I'll go with the two years. But I would like this to be conditional, and then it reverts back to the law if it doesn't come through.
And Mr. Mayor, I will add, and second, Councilman Britton, third, whatever, the two years is fine with me to get them, get them going. Give them some flexibility.
Mr. Groot, was one-year CO, they're showing substantial progress. Would that meet the intent of the one-year?
No, sir. Not the way it's written.
Not the way it's written? Well, I mean, I don't mind the extra time, but I hate infinite time, because infinite time allows people to dread their feet. I mean, we should attach something to this, that if there isn't progress being made within a year, that they lose their vested right. I mean, I can understand their point, but, you know, and I don't mind giving them the extra time. I'm just not a fan of blanket extra time.
Mr. Cobb just had a good idea, I think, which would be approval of the SDO and the Architectural Design Order within one year, and then CO, whatever period you all decide is reasonable.
All righty. So, they have to get the-
Site Design Order and Architectural-
Design Order.
Design Order.
Within a year.
Within a year. And then CO in two.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Well, I don't know what the council would think about that, but that's good thinking outside of the box. And, you know, again, I know the Tasman family did get caught up in all of that, and we can apologize all we want, but, you know, it was not the doing of us that created that perfect storm as you were going through pre-application hearings. Mr. Tasman, before I pose this question to council, can you come on up? I'd like to ask you a question. Would you agree to getting your SDO and your Architectural Design within a year, and then your CO in two?
We have the CO within two, the SDO and everything. The issue that we're not anticipating, but hoping to avoid, is delays in being able to put in that application by having to get all the documents that we need from all the different organizations, like the Florida Department of Transportation, St. John's River Management, if there's any-
Right. And you can understand that, but I hope you understand my point. I mean, you know, because what'll end up happening, and a lot of times when we do these blankets, and we, no offense, and we have applicants who come up here and ask us for more time, it's inevitable you'll be here 17 months from now, telling us, well, you know, I couldn't get this, I couldn't get that, now I need more time. So, I'm trying to just avoid that situation. You're asking us for more time, which I have no issue giving you, but I want to have a timeline on you that you're actually going to get an application into us.
We will have the pharmacy up and running within two years. I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I could be in the same situation where I come up in 11 months and say I haven't had the opportunity to get the SDO in, and I'm asking you for more time, just that-
Well, what do you plan on putting the application in? Because that, see, that was half the problem and why we're here, because you kept meeting for pre-apps, and it was months and months and months and months, and never made an application. So, that's why we're here. So, when can we anticipate your application?
We're, we're working actively towards getting the application. It's not going to be years and years down the line. I mean, the, it's been a, hopefully, it's always been within a year. That's my, my goal, is to have a pharmacy.
Can we expect to get an application within six months? Is that reasonable?
If we have to do it, we have to do it. I mean, it is what it is. At this point, we've gone through this whole process. We're at this point, and if this is what we have to do, then this is what we're going to have to do.
Just trying to get an application in, that's all. Just something that, you know, staff can, you know, hang their hat on. If the application had been in, you know we wouldn't have been in this position.
Yes, sir.
Six months?
Well, a year is SDO and Architectural Design. That's what staff was proposing. And I don't even know if the council's going to go for this. I'm just asking questions right now, and then I'll, you guys might be getting two years at the end of this. I don't know.
Two years would be great.
All right. Okay. I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask him a question, too, while he's up here?
Sure. No, it's okay.
I'm feeling kind of compelled to solve a legal problem that you don't even realize you may have. And I think the solution may be, do you want to, instead of holding this property in the name of Ian Tasman, hold it in the name of an LLC? Because then, that would be the property owner. You could transfer rights to the LLC to somebody else, and then the right to continue with this plan would live on in perpetuity.
Well, can I, this, this is not, this is not the issuance of personal rights. This is the issuance of property rights. So, Mr. Tasman could sell the property to another, another owner and have a pharmacy, under the same conditions as this. The original question you asked is, what about a lapse?
Okay. I just want to make sure that was addressed.
Yes. Well, no, lapse isn't addressed. I think-
Okay.
The fact that this is transferable is addressed.
Okay.
So, Mr. Tasman could sell it to Eckers, and Eckers could have a farm, there's not an Eckers. That dated me, didn't it?
You know what he means.
I know what he means.
To Walgreens. There you go. To Walgreens, and Walgreens could have a pharmacy. Okay? So, it's transferable with those conditions that we, that you, whatever conditions you impose, no drive-through, etc. So, but if the property goes to some other use or into disuse for two years, it may be, it may lapse. And that'll be a decision that you all, you all make, whether or not it's lapsed. I have an opinion, but I haven't been asked it right now. But there's some point where that right could lapse if it's not used.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just make a quick suggestion as a compromise? It's obvious that the Tasman family needs two years.
That's fine.
My hearing, you're right. So, how about, how about this? And this is just my, my proposal, is I like to make things easy. So, you get the two years. If you don't get this project done within two years, and your pharmacy is there, you'll lose the vesting, and now that's, it's over. You can't build it. You got two years. And after two years, there's no more extensions. That seems to be fair. That satisfies Mr. Mayor, who wants a timeline, which I agree with, and gives you guys the time to do it. But if nothing happens in two years, that vesting is gone. And if you want to build a pharmacy, it's got to go in C1, C2 somewhere else. Is that fair enough?
Yes, it is.
Even if you're halfway done with the project?
That's fair.
Okay.
So, that would, I didn't make the motion, but the motioner and secretary, that's my, my friendly amendment to you.
Isn't that what we're-
That's what we're- First place? That's the way it's written. So, I mean, that's fine. You know, I, I'll be good with it. I'll compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, what we're hearing is that CO in 24 months.
Right. So, now, if the CO isn't issued in 24 months, Mr. Groot, and just to go to Deputy Mayor's question, let's assume 24 months comes around, they're halfway through construction, they haven't CO'd, what happens to their vested rights?
I would, here's what would happen. I would give it to Dr. Korea.
I'm sorry?
I would give it to Dr. Korea. I would draft the notice of expiration of vested rights and hand it to her, and she would either execute it or have Mr. Cobb, ask Mr. Cobb to execute it, be recorded in the land records, and the vested rights would be gone.
Okay. As long as we all agree to that.
I will be, hopefully, serving the whole community's pharmacy needs within two years.
We just have to have a deadline. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you understand that.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, if you would have had that darn application in, we wouldn't be here. All right. Get an application in, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Just hang on one second. Any other questions for Mr. Tasman?
Just, just to summarize, all four of the conditions have to be met, including CO.
Two years.
In two years. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Means you're going to be tied to their hip.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Up and down the dais one more time, for the good of the order. Any other questions? Motioner?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm looking up here, and it says approval of certificate of vesting for Oviedo Pharmacy. And then I'm looking at the certificate of vesting saying Ian Tasman. I just want to make sure that there's scrivener error, you know, make sure it's all-
The owner is Ian Tasman, as I understand it, based upon the Seminole County Property Appraiser's records. And that's the way the certificate of vesting is drafted. If there's an, that's, so that's your answer to your question.
Okay. As long as somehow or another, we can work it out, so these guys can build a pharmacy. I just want to make sure we don't get stuck on that.
The certificate of vesting will be issued in favor of the property owner. And it was significant. Mr. Tasman, you correct me, can I do this, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Tasman, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand, based upon my, the records of the Seminole County Property Appraiser, that you are the owner, and you are a pharmacist. Because that's, there you go. That's part of the reason we recommended the vesting.
Okay. All righty. So, the motion was made to amend the resolution to two years for CO. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Groot, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Motion on the table, as amended. All in favor of the motion, please signify
by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck to you.
Please get an application in and make me feel better in a few months. Please.
What a journey.
Email me a copy when it's done. Or you can have your, have your neighbor just come over, not my neighbor, come over and knock on my door. He'll let me know.
Good luck to you.
Who did a lot of lobbying for you guys, by the way. You, yes, you should. All righty. So, moving along, we're up to item number 21, Ordinance number 1659, Golf Card Pilot Program. Let's just flip over to this real quick. Mr. Groot, can you read that one by title only for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida pertaining to the use of golf carts upon designated roads within the City of Oviedo, subject to specified restrictions and provisions of state law, providing for legislative purposes, findings, and intent, providing for definitions, providing for the designation and prohibition of roads, and the potential addition of roads, providing for authorized means of use and prohibited and lawful means of use, providing for registration, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for signage, only as may be required by state law, providing for enforcement, penalties, and collections, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for complications, as well as the correction of scrivener errors, and providing for an effective date and a contingent sunset provision. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, if you could, could you pull up Memo Attachment 2 on the screen, please? That's the, that's a map of the area for the pilot program. Yes, Mayor, this is a request to adopt ordinance number 1659. This is first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance, Florida statutes allows local governments to designate certain streets to be, for the operation of golf carts. And one of the things that, that allows is that the local government can enact an ordinance that relates to the golf cart operation and equipment, which is more restrictive than what is provided for in the state statute. It also allows for golf cart operation on sidewalks adjacent to specific segments of road, under certain conditions. road, under certain conditions. This ordinance provides for the operation of golf carts within a certain area of the city. As you can see, the, the area located on the map, which is east of Lockwood Boulevard, within the Twin Rivers subdivision. This ordinance allows golf carts to maybe be operated on these, on city-designated streets within the certain area. It establishes the pilot program, so that we can see how it can be, how it can work in a small area, then we can look at trying to apply it in larger areas, should it be successful. It allows us to operate, and allows the carts to be operated between sunrise and sunset, except that only carts that have the proper equipment can be operated, operated after sunset. It requires certain equipment to be put onto the carts, such as to make them street-legal. It requires the owner of the cart to carry certain types of insurance. It requires that they be equipped with efficient brakes, a parking brake, reliable steering, safe tires, rearview mirrors, signals, a horn, also reflective devices on the, on the golf cart. The number of occupants cannot exceed the number of seats within the golf cart. Children three years of age or younger must be placed in a proper restraining, restraining seat, as well as children that are over the age of four will be also required to have a seatbelt. Animals must be transported in a safe and humane manner, and that the golf cart must also be registered for use in the city. Now, this will become, this ordinance will become effective upon the adoption by the city council, but its effectiveness can only extend past April 1st of 2018 if the city council adopts a resolution extending its effectiveness at that time. Hence, the pilot program. The pilot program will run through April 1st of next year, and then if we find that the program's working, we'll bring a resolution to the council to extend the effectiveness of the program. It's recommended that you, tonight, that you schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 16, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to schedule a public hearing for resolution number 1659 on October 16, 2017, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second?
Motion second? Motioner anything?
Also.
Secondary?
I'd like to see this include also the Pine Avenue section north of the trail. There's a lot of horse properties back there, and a lot of people who are using golf carts anyway, so I don't know if that's something that, that maybe we could consider expanding between now and then.
Okay. Let me go up and down the dais, we'll see what the temperature is. Councilman Pollak?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I've gotten stuck behind a few golf courts, golf carts in that area anyway, so to, if, if they can register them and make them legal, that, that, at least we would know who and where they are.
Before we, okay, that's good. Councilman Britton?
Well, since we're expanding out, I look at this as a way for someone to use a golf cart on a golf course. And I happen, now, part of the sidewalk on Lockwood is actually a part of the, the cart path for the golf course, but it doesn't go far enough in, in the map here. So I'm, the way I'm looking at Google Earth is maybe extend the area up to, uh, Connaught Green or Big Oaks Drive, so folks who play golf, want to use their own golf course, they can, they can go up on the sidewalk and get to the, you know, the first hole.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but I just conferred with the chief a second ago.
I was going to bring him up, don't worry.
He had, go ahead, Chief.
Come on, Chief.
We can table it till the next meeting.
I wouldn't do that. Whoever operating the golf court, carts now, if they're not street-legal, that means they have a windshield, brake lights, seat belts, windshield wipers, they would be, you cannot operate them even if we extended the area. As far as the sidewalk, according to state statute, sidewalk, in order to have a golf cart on the sidewalk, the sidewalk has to be eight feet wide.
I think it is up there, isn't it?
Well, over by, on the side of the golf course it is, but coming down from Big Oaks, it's not. There's no place, I'm from Big Oaks, that the sidewalk is eight feet wide. Therefore, per state statute, they couldn't operate a golf cart on the sidewalk.
So, I understand that, but I have another question for you.
Sure.
What's, what's the difference between a golf cart and a, a gator or an ATV?
ATVs, again, they have to be registered. You couldn't operate those on the sidewalk or on the streets either, because they're not registered.
Okay.
They're not street-legal.
I really don't want to see gators driving around, even though Mike Beavers has a nice one we use every now and then, but.
There are exceptions for public safety.
Okay.
Per state statute.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just, just one, one, one thing, real quick. If you look on page five, while the chief's up there, on page five, at the top of the page, page five of the ordinance, paren five. When you're there, just let me know.
Page five, what number?
Paren five, at the top of the page. We, that, that provision needs to be deleted. This ordinance has been bounced around several times, and some things got carried over, and that needs to be deleted. To make a long story short, whatever time of the day a golf court's, golf cart is operated, it has to be street-legal. And it's not depending upon whether it's after sunset or not. So, that, that, that was erroneously left in.
That's correct. In order to operate a golf cart on a designated street, it has to be street-legal, regardless of the time of day.
And, and any expansion of an area needs to be studied, and the police chief has to confirm that it's safe. And I don't know whether the area that was just talked about for an expansion, have you studied that yet?
It has not been looked at.
Well, you, you can only act on the area which the police chief has studied and affirms is safe for traffic. So.
Okay.
Chief, while you're up there, just a quick question. I'm assuming that these have to be licensed drivers, but item four in the memo says a golf cart may not be operated on public road or street by any person under the age of 14. So, reading that, you would think, can it?
That's per state statute.
Right.
State statute also gives municipalities and counties to be more restrictive.
Okay, so where required, you have to be a licensed driver?
That's correct. If you look at it, if you're operating a vehicle on the street, you'd want somebody that at least has some driver training to operate that on the street. They still have to obey all the traffic laws, stopping and stop signs, and everything else.
Right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I mean, just from my own personal, I, I say, let's do the pilot program. The chief's studied it well, I've had some conversations with him, see how that all works, and if it works good, then we'll, we'll go. But, you know, we have to reiterate, though, Chief, the golf carts that are out on Twin Rivers Golf Course, these are not street-legal golf carts.
That's correct.
You need a golf cart, it's got to look like the ones that are up in the villages, that have all the equipment you just talked about. So, that needs to be clarified and confirmed over and over again.
That's correct. And that's per state statutes, too. So, the ones that are running up and down Pine have been illegal before, and they continue, and will continue to be illegal.
Mr. Mayor, one more, one more thing. Just going back to Councilman Britton's question, gators and golf carts, how do you differentiate those?
By statute, there's definitions by statute. Gators and ATVs used for public safety or by municipalities have a special exemption under the state statute. There's a separate state statute for that.
My, my, my question is.
Private use.
Well, my, I mean, I'm trying to physically differentiate like a gator from a golf, like a gas-powered golf cart. I mean, they, they can tend to look very similar, and if, and the gators have the seatbelts, they have the turn signals, they have the, the brakes, and everything else that you need with them. I, I, I'm, I'm having trouble differentiating them, and if that's something that.
Can I ask a question that may help? And it may make me look very stupid, too. Is a gator an ROV? A recreational off-highway vehicle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, there's a separate, I'm not, thank you. An ROV is defined by statute, and a golf course cart is defined by statute.
Okay. So, that's perfect.
What is the difference, though? Now I'm just kind of curious.
Well, I, I. I'd like to read the statute tomorrow. The hour is getting late. Anything else for the chief? Thank you, Chief. You're welcome.
So, we're keeping it the same pilot program area? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
Yes. I, I think that's.
For, for now.
Okay.
Yep, we're keeping the same pilot program as we have. All righty, so the motion on table is to schedule the public hearing for October 16, 2017, here in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, at approximately 6:30 PM. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need to specify that we're deleting some stuff?
We told you we were, so.
Okay.
It's understood, in my judgment.
Then I'm an aye, I was a delayed reaction person.
That's all right. Usually on those things, the scrivener stuff.
Okay, good.
On the second reading is when it's important. All righty, so moving along, we're up to resolution number 3467-17. It's item number 22 on our, hm? We just did. Okay, now wait a second, I did call the motion, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because Megan had a delayed reaction.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
They often have delayed reactions.
Did you have a senior moment, Deputy Mayor? Just checking.
He thinks I just sit here and don't pay attention. I'm right on them.
I didn't think you weren't paying attention. I was, I was hoping I was paying attention. I, I have been, I have been known to miss a thing or two. Resolution number 3467-17, site development order number 482-17, item number 22. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve site development order 42-17, and architectural design order number 022-17 for the Goddard School Development. If you will remember, this was brought forward to you at your September 18 meeting, in which you tabled the, the, the application, and asked the staff and the applicant to go and work with the state DOT to address some accessibility issues, access issues. And the applicant and the staff did meet with DOT. They come up with a plan in which the driveway will be located to the north to align with Clark Street. As far as access to the property, people will be able to perform a right-in to the property, they will be able to perform a right-out of the property, they will be able to perform a left-end of the property, but they will not be able to go from Clark Street straight across 434 into the property. The movement of the driveway does, did require some adjustments to the deviations, especially the spacing requirements between the existing driveways to the north and the south. There's also going to be signage that will be included on 434 to alert drivers that the, that the school is in the area. There'll also be signage on Clark Street saying you cannot go straight across. The DOT, there was a memory, an email provided from DOT that they are, they are in concurrence with these proposed adjustments. The applicant has revised the plans to reflect these adjustments in the plan. The, the deviations as far as the distance requirements between the driveways have been adjusted to reflect the new location of the driveway. There was a loss of about three parking spaces, but they were already providing more than the minimum standard, so they're still within the Land Billment Code requirements. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3467-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicants are present. Do you have any presentation for us, or are we going to let the city manager speak for it?
I'm Sean King, developing the Goddard School for Scott and Tracy Sheldon, and there was a presentation submitted. Do you guys have a copy of that, or proceed out there?
Why don't you just run through it real quick?
Yeah, sure, just, yeah, just real briefly, because there's not any Goddard Schools in the central Florida area, just thought it might make sense to just let you guys know about what Goddard's all about. First of all, we're a nationwide network of schools, all franchise, individually owned and operated. Each school caters to children basically from infant up to the pre-K age, and we operate with a very high-quality standards at the schools. And we define high-quality through the low teacher to, I'm sorry, the low student-to-teacher ratios that we operate at, but also the proprietary curriculum that we have. We're engaged with some of the leading authorities in early childhood education, from Yale University, Northwestern, whatnot, that, that work with us, and the latest thought leadership on the curriculum for the children, but also through quality comes to having the onsite owner. And at every school nationwide, that's what we have. Now, this is the first school, as we mentioned, in this area, and it took a while to decide where in this, what would be a good community, and also finding the right mix of the, the owners that would be operating onsite. Now, it's, it's well-known through other areas that we're in, that when families are moving into those areas, they often look to be near Goddard Schools, just having the experience that they've had at our schools that we have again nationwide. But also, very important with this network of schools, over 450, is there's a lot of lessons learned, and the franchisor constantly reviews everything that we're doing, from safety standards, not only during the development of the buildings that we do, but also the interior and how we operate, and they have a very strong quality assurance program. There's different areas that, that actually, when they take a look at licensing schools, the process typically is very rigorous that the state goes through, but in states like New Jersey, just simply phone calls that we are doing, they know the standards that Goddard Schools have, and what they go through, what the ratios are, and how they operate, and what they do for licensing perspectives. They know that the schools are built right and done right from all those, all those fronts. So, this school here in Oviedo, there's going to be no exception. It is going to be licensed for 160 children, and the interior design will very much embrace the Oviedo, the city, the community that we have here. And the, the owners and operators of the school will be onsite, and that is going to be, like I mentioned before, Scott and Tracy. And there's some, some history back there on them, in terms of their heritage in Oviedo, but also just the fact that not only they have the education, but really the passion for working with young children, and, and running a very high-quality, great school for the community, that will, I'm sure will be a very special one, and they'll all look at, as we've seen through other places throughout the, the US that we've been in, and the alumni, and how great of a thing it is, and what it'll be for, mean for this community. So, with that, I know the next part we get into on the, the civil engineering here, I'd like to call up Luke, if he could come up here.
Luke Klassen, Appian Engineering, 221 Lee Road, Winter Park, Florida, 32789. We're the civil engineers on the project, and we'd just like to answer your question, run it through the slides. If you have anything you have questions about, feel free to stop me, ask anything. To get the drivers' attentions, one of the things we, we did in this coordination effort with the FDOT was provide two additional signs, one southbound, or one, on, on one side of the 434, and on the other side for both direction, both movement directions. In, in proximity to the entry feature, or to the entrance for the proposed school. Go to the next, or.
So you're a right-out only?
Correct. So we've changed it to a right-out only. There is a left-end movement and a right-end movement, but there's three movements that have been eliminated from this intersection, on top of shifting the center line to align it across the street with Clark. We eliminated the straight-through to Clark, and our left-turn movement, as well as the Clark-through movement. So we're assigning Clark as well to be limited to a right-hand movement and a left-hand movement, correct. So that shows it. So in doing that, at a basic two-lane intersection, two two-lane roads, you have a total of 32 conflict points, and they define conflict points, or DOT defines conflict points in three different ways. You can either have crossings, which are the major conflict points, there's 16 of those, and by crossings you mean like a T-intersection point, where one person could be going, the other person's going the perpendicular direction. Those are the kind of, the bad conflict points you really want to avoid. In addition, they have the diverging conflict points, which is really the point where someone's driving and they choose to take a right-hand movement, so if everyone's going northbound and someone takes a right turn, that could potentially be a conflict point, because they're slowing down, so someone could potentially hit them. And then there's emerging, so if someone's taking a left-hand movement, they're merging into that lane, that's also a potential conflict point. So of those, the most serious ones are the 16 crossing, crossing conflict points, and then the eight merging ones are actually considered the second tier. The diverging ones are the least amount of impact, the least amount of conflicts that actually occur at those points. But there's a total of 32 points, and the reason we're going to bring that up is because by eliminating these three movements, the left-through, or I'm sorry, the straight-through coming from the school, the left-out, and then the straight-through from Clark into the school, by eliminating those three, you actually eliminate eight potential conflict points. So you're taking one-quarter of the conflict points away, and of those eight, there's actually seven of the crossing conflict points removed. So you're basically eliminating roughly half, or seven out of 16 of the crossing, or what would FDOT consider as the major conflict points. One of the other ones is the diverging that you're letting. Okay?
Any questions?
I've got a question.
Sure.
You, I see, I understand the right-turn out, but if you're allowing a left turn in, how, what's the barrier, what's the way to eliminate the straight-across from Clark with that left turn? I'm just thinking, I mean, the road's not that big, what do you, how are you eliminating that?
You're saying from 434, taking a left into the?
If you're, if you're going from west to east, in that picture.
But you're saying the left end, so I'm just trying to define, you're not coming from Clark, you can't take a left into the Goddard School?
If you're, if you're coming, if you're coming south, and you're, and you make a left in, are you able to make a left in if you're coming from, coming south?
Yes.
Into the Goddard School?
How are you going to stripe it to keep them from zigzagging across on the car?
Yeah, that's, that's...
To prevent, oh, coming out of the Goddard School to be going straight across from Clark? Okay, yeah.
A triangle.
Correct. Yeah, you have, you have, there's different ways we can do it. We chose it, we provided the striping that pushes them to the right, and it is also signed that way. Same thing on Clark's side, it's signed both directions and striped correctly.
You're having to commit a vehicle, something illegal to go do that way?
Yeah. Could it potentially happen? Yes, but someone can also potentially jump a curb. It is signed that way, and it is illegal to make that movement. That is something that is enforceable by your police chief, not after next, this week, but a different police chief next week.
He likes to write tickets. He's not giving up his ticket book.
God bless his 43 years, but he's done enough ticket writing, I'm sure. So it is enforceable by your code and by your standards, because it is signed and striped adequately per FDOT standards and per city of Oviedo standards.
Is that what you were trying to get through, Bill?
Yeah. Yeah, so it does, it does prevent the movements, as in it's enforceable by law, to all extent purposes, applicable that way.
Any other questions? You're good. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I may have some, but I don't know if it's appropriate now or later. It's about the site plan deviations. Under our Land Development Code, in something like this, which is a quasi-judicial hearing, my understanding is that we do not have discretion to grant deviations unless it meets one of the excuses that are articulated in our Land Development Code. One thing for which there's no adequate excuse is having the fence setback be less than 25 feet. Is there a way to just move that, or with that, I'm guessing that does not impact your designs substantially, hoping that it does?
You're saying the fence setback from?
From Central Avenue, correct.
The reason why the fence is set back at the distance it is for, to match the distance from the, from the building as well. We want to make it a continuous alignment. We want to kind of match from 434, since you have a good viewshed of the aesthetics of the site as you're looking for from 434. We do have landscaping proposed in front of the fence. We are blocking that as much as possible. There are two options to do this. We could have either pushed back the fence alignment, the fence, by doing a building setback, or we could have, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we worked with city staff on which way they wanted us to attack this. And city staff encouraged us to go this direction to, to meet their code as best as possible and come up with a plan that we felt we gave our best effort to meet your code. Is your question that you don't want the fence in the front?
Well, the issue is, I don't know that we have discretion to say that because you want to build a larger building, we can then let you change all your other setbacks as a result of wanting to build a building that has different dimensions than fits on this piece of land. An appropriate site deviation would be for something where the land, because of the way it is, you can't do anything with it, like the driveway is already there. So I look at that and think, okay, well, it's already there, work around what you have. And then the mayor brought up some good concerns about the traffic movements, and that has sort of progressed, so I understand that alignment. Then there is the elimination of accent trees, which is part of our Land Development Code. You're not allowed to have them, which Councilman Pollock brought up, is another challenge with our code, but there's no reason why you could not have a 25-foot setback on the fence, other than you just kind of want to have the building be a different shape and have the yard, buffer yard be a different configuration than what fits on this piece of land.
Hello, I'm John Wolfarth, Appian Engineering, 2221 Lee Road, Winter Park, Florida. So we already shifted the building back as far to the east as we could. That's the reason we're asking for the deviation, because the parking can't go any further towards the east.
Okay, I'm looking at the site plan, so it can't go any farther towards the east. Do you have to have aisles that wide? Because another concern is the southern buffer yard, where there is a six-foot deviation requested, and I have the same issue, sort of triggered by the fact that you still have enough parking, even though the driveway has been moved. So I guess this is a question for...
Well, the first deviation's for, it's a building setback. The building's still 25 feet, it's just a deviation for a height restriction, and that's kind of what's confusing. It's a four-foot versus a six-foot height deviation. So we can put a four-foot fence there right now, we're just doing a two-foot extension for security reasons, for the children.
Okay, so it's a height deviation versus a setback?
Yeah, that's why it's kind of confusing. The setback's 25 feet, and the building still meets that 25 feet.
Okay, that makes me feel a little bit better, that it's not so much a setback as a height issue. And then what about the southern buffer yard?
That's actually a driveway access easement for the property to the south, so they can't really cut that off. It's not like they could put a subdivision there, because that's the only access to the, to that property, to the, to the east of us.
Can you, can you explain that a little better?
Sure. There's a dirt road right now that has a driveway on 434.
Not on the property, adjacent to the southern side of the property.
Just south, okay.
The driveway easement that services the parcel to the southeast.
So this is on your property that's an easement?
No, it's south of our property.
That's south of our property, that services the property to the southeast.
Okay, so because that can never be used, because it is an easement...
The whole reason for the bigger buffers to be adjacent to residential development,
this is always going to be a road or an access to that, to that property to the east.
Okay.
The ingress egress can't be removed from that, and so you still get the effective buffer that you're requesting, because you already have that, that's a 15-foot, 50-foot ingress egress access. So you're essentially getting, what you would normally request would be our 30-foot, you're essentially getting that 15 feet on top of that, at the buffer already.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. There's no request to speak forms on this item, so what is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3467-17, as presented.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Councilman Pollock?
Looks good. Thank you for working with us on the, on the road there with Clark Street. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, guys. Project looks great. I don't have to say welcome to Oviedo, because I know you've been here for a long time, but look forward to working with you. Good job. Thank you.
Councilman Britton?
Yeah, I'm happy to see you address some of the concerns we have. I think they're acceptable, in my mind, especially that right-out only, I think is going to make a big difference, so good job.
Councilmember Slater?
Do you have a general opening date set yet?
I don't have any on that.
A goal.
Probably April.
I think you're going to be pretty good in about 30 seconds, so. Anything else? Great job, guys. Thanks for addressing the traffic issue. I do appreciate that. Motion on the table is to adopt as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Need less than 30 seconds. Go forth and build, gentlemen, and ladies. Thank you.
Good luck.
All righty, moving right along, we're up to item number 23, Resolution 3478-17, the Oviedo PACE Resolution. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve the establishment of a property-assessed clean energy, known as PACE, B-A-C-E, program in the city, and also to approve associated interlocal agreements with various third parties who currently administer the four districts within the state of Florida. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kelly, and he's going to present the resolution to you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor. The PACE Resolution authorizes, as Mr. Cobb said, the signing of interlocal agreements with four districts within the state of Florida, which are actually units of local government. And what the PACE districts do is they allow property, individual property owners, both commercial and, both commercial and residential, to sign financing agreements, which are paid back through the non-ad valorem assessments administered by County Property Appraisal. And as I mentioned, there are four providers, and tonight, representing those providers, we have the Florida Green Finance Authority, Mr. Devesh Nermal is here, representing them. The Green Port or Pace District, we have Ricardo Rodriguez and Ms. Kate Wisner here, representing the Florida Resiliency and Energy District. We have Ms. Patricia Palma, and we have the, representing the Florida PACE Funding Agency, we have Mr. CJ DeSantis. Each of them are here to answer your questions and give a quick introduction of themselves. As I mentioned, qualified improvements that can be financed through PACE funding are green energy and scope, the, sorry about that.
You'll get better at it with time, don't you?
Yes, sir. The interlocal agreements are attached in this memo, and they are here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All righty, I have no request to speak forms. Do the PACE folks want to make a brief? All four of you want to speak, or is one going to speak for all four?
All four of us.
Okay.
We'll be quick.
That's all right. I'm assuming you're all competitors?
Yes, we're all competitors.
All righty, well, I haven't seen any blood baths in here, so I'm going to assume that's true.
No worries. Devesh Nermal, my address is 983 Park Street, Clearwater, Florida. I'm with Renew Financial and the District is Florida Green Finance Authority. Just as a big picture, in the wake of Irma, I kind of wanted to just mention that the state statute that enabled PACE in Florida really envisioned, how can we accelerate the resiliency of our built environment and energy independence? And so storm events, I mean, this is a perfect tool, you have blue tarp roofs, folks that didn't have insurance, or they're processing their FEMA claims, insurance claims, they can use PACE, they can get qualified for the 100% financing immediately, and of course, pay that off once they get their claims adjusted. So quickly, our company, we started funding projects in Florida last fall. We currently have 1,000 projects funded. 42% of those are wind mitigation, 55% are energy efficiency, and there's a couple that have saved about 2% renewable. I think central Florida, you can see a bit more of the solar. Each region differs, but as you go to the coast, there's more wind mitigation. The big point I like to emphasize really quick is the consumer protections that come with PACE don't exist in the marketplace right now. Right now, with PACE, there's eligible products, there's permitting requirements, there's payment only after the contractor's completed the work, and several other pieces that make this distinguish, distinguishes from other home improvement financing. I think the important part of that is transforming the market. Finally, our company's committed to the renewal and rebuilding of Florida post Irma. Our CEO started the concept of PACE in California to kind of democratize clean energy, but in Florida, it's about the resiliency too. We are providing incentives, $500 rebate on projects initiated, and $100 to nonprofits helping in the recovery for every project we do in Florida. So just want to make everybody aware of that, and thank you for your time.
Great.
Thank you for your leadership in Seminole County on this, by the way.
You're welcome. Who's next?
Ricardo Rodriguez, Y-Green Energy Fund, 3390 Mary Street, Suite 124.
I have to ask you, can they use this in Puerto Rico yet?
Not yet. We're trying to get there. I mean, they need it, that's for sure. Miami, Florida, 33133, Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. I'm the Local Government Affairs Relations Director for Y-Green Energy Fund. Y-Green is the nation's leading PACE provider, you know, providing financing for residential, multifamily, and commercial PACE projects. The PACE program provides low-cost, long-term private financing to private property owners for energy efficiency, renewable energy, and hurricane protection upgrades, for example, wind-resistant roofing, seawalls, impact-resistant windows and doors, solar shutters, built-in generators, HVAC systems, and obviously solar. All of those can be financed at 100% of the cost. PACE financing allows property owners to have a greater choice in financing options for energy efficiency and hurricane protection upgrades for their homes and businesses. Y-Green offers a turnkey program at no cost or liability to the government, and no public funds are used, which are obviously key to the city. Activating a PACE program in your community helps create jobs, increase economic investment, reduces energy costs, and insures premiums to property owners, and obviously, across the board, makes properties more valuable. It's 100% voluntary for your citizens, and it's being adopted in every region of the state and across the country. State legislation passed in 2010 that authorizes you as a city to actually join PACE districts. Since that authorization, Y-Green has had, is involved in over 114 municipalities and 12 counties have joined our PACE district. We are currently active in central Florida, in Orlando, Winter Park, and Longwood, and we're working out, you know, in different parts of the state to obviously get more adoptions in your local area. We currently got endorsed, or the PACE program got endorsed by the Florida League of Cities recently, and the National Association of Counties have also endorsed PACE programs. Currently, 15, 100, 15,000 properties have benefited across the state from Y-Green's PACE program, totaling in $319 million in energy efficiency and hurricane protection upgrades in the state. We have certified more than 1,500 contractors throughout the state to provide PACE, you know, PACE financing through their work, creating or sustaining over 4,000 jobs and adding over 800 million in economic stimulus in the state, and an estimated 43 million in insurance savings. In terms of environmental benefits, 19.9 megawatts of solar have been installed, and energy saved is equal to providing one year of power to 315,000 homes in the state, and reducing carbon emissions by 383,000 metric tons. By providing PACE, you can achieve the benefits of economic development and job creation, and obviously overall, your all-policy goals for hardening your, your city for upcoming storms. You know, without any additional administrative or legal or financial responsibilities from you as a city, you know, we can offer everything to your residents at no cost. Thank you for your time. Obviously, we'll be here to answer questions from you all.
Great, thank you.
Can I approach you guys to give you some more information on our program?
Why don't you hand it off to the clerk, and she'll get it all down.
I'll approach everyone else.
Great, thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, Ms. Clerk, my name is Conrad DeSantis. I'm the head of Government Relations for Counterpoint Energy Solutions, one of the, the program administrator for one of the PACE programs, the Florida PACE Funding Agency. We're based at 6401 Congress Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm a Florida native. My dad built the fifth house in North Palm Beach, Florida, which is where I grew up. We're not going to keep you long.
The fifth house?
The fifth house, 1956. Worked for Pratt &amp; Aircraft out in the middle of the state. I'm not going to keep you long. We are here, four representatives of the four districts. We're here to answer questions. Key things I just want to leave you with is no cost, no risk, only the people that use the program pay for the program. It is, this train has left the station. We are the largest program. We've been approved in 21 counties.
I don't know if he agrees with you, but that's okay.
Well, we are very congenial and coordinate on this portion of it, but we're very fierce competitors, and competition is good. This is, my only point was, this train has left the station, this is apolitical, this is tens of thousands, transactions, billions of dollars have been done. The only people that benefit are your constituents, property owners. We are here out of disrespect for home rule, and again, keep it short, we're here to answer your questions. I think the program, and lastly, just want to thank both your attorney, your city manager, and their staff. I've done this, again, we're approved in 21 counties and four other cities in four other counties, and the professionalism and the feedback we've been able to achieve, and the alacrity with which we are to move through the rather complicated documentations is the best I've seen. I just want to thank them.
That's kind of you. Thank you. But you just, you have to come up and tell us you're the largest, I mean.
No, I'm a representative with the Florida Resiliency Energy District. Just want to thank you for your consideration, and just here to answer questions.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. I have no request to speak forms on this item, so what is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3478-17.
Second. Motion second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I think, we think we've all got good, good update on this, and thank you all for coming here, some traveling, some distance tonight. I think it's great. I mean, I just really discovered this not that long ago, but it really just gives residents an option who maybe don't want to use a bank, or just want to, want to do this, but to be able to put it on their, their tax bill and do, do some good things. So it's a nice, nice tool to have in the box, and I'm sure we'll be working with you, So, it's a nice tool to have in the box, and I'm sure we'll be working with you, and it's a good program. Thank you so much.
Who is my second? Counselor?
I'm going to use the deputy mayor's quote. This is a no-brainer.
There you go. Counselor Member Slater? It's green, you've got to love it.
It's great, it is green. If it's green, it's good, just like the grass will be after it dies and the weeds grow back.
There you go. Counselor Member Britton?
One question, Brian, I'm going to surprise you. I hope I don't catch you off guard. This is not the Pace program that we used for iron, correct?
No, sir, this is not.
I thought, oh, we're going to get Pace back.
It's different.
Okay. I'm good.
You're good. Mr. Cobb, do you remember, was it, I'm trying to remember, was it a year and a half ago at Florida League of Cities we saw this, or two years ago?
I think it was a year ago.
Okay, so it was down at Fort Lauderdale.
Right. I think that's where we saw it.
And it's taken a while to work it all the way through and get staff to understand it, because, you know, it is convoluted. Now, I happen to have, my neighbor sells solar power.
Yeah, I think he is.
And Mike, when he heard we were talking about this, I can't go past him on the driveway without hearing about, when are you guys going to have Pace? And I know staff and Mr. Groot and Patrick out on board have been working diligently on it to get it, but, I mean, there's some other aspects of the program I don't think that folks realize. I mean, by us initiating the Pace program, when folks make these improvements, it improves the property value of their house. So it adds to the tax base for the city of Oviedo, and then also, as has been mentioned, the wind-resistant program that can be added on to it in lieu of the hurricanes. I mean, you can do the deck attachments, you can do secondary water barriers, wind-resistant shingles, I mean, the gable end bracing, there's so much more that you can do than just solar. You know, everybody...
In Florida, it's actually, the bulk of the business is wind hardening. At least for Y Green. I obviously can't speak for you guys, but I believe it's all about wind hardening in Florida.
Storm shutters, windows, I think, if the hurricaneproof windows.
Yeah, impact-resistant windows, impact-resistant doors, any that reinforces or hardens that structure, you know, is pretty much a Pace project that's doable. If it's affixed to the structure, like a built-in generator, your generators for homes that want to have that built-in generator, it has to be affixed to that structure, so it's...
Right. My understanding, from reading the documentation and seeing the presentation at Florida League, is that another advantage of this is that the cost of the improvement, since it's on the tax rolls, actually transfers with the sale of the property.
It may transfer.
If the buyer and seller agree.
Correct, correct.
So if somebody installs, I don't know, $30,000 with the improvements, and they've got 20,000 left on that note, I guess they would have to probably disclose that on the seller's disclosure.
Yes.
That debt is there, but...
Yeah, those disclosures are there from the Realtors.
Right, but the program allows it to transfer.
Correct. I mean, it may transfer. It depends, again, on the sellers, on...
Mortgage company.
Mortgage company.
Right, the mortgage company will allow that to be there. I did read that also, but the option's there.
Correct.
So it gives people flexibility who, you know, might be considering these types of improvements, but not wanting to do an equity line that has to be paid off, that you could do this program.
Well, and there's also inherent protections in the program, and an equity line of credit. Once you get that nice chunk of cash, you don't really have to do that project. You can go off and take that money off to, and go take your family to Cozumel, if you'd like, or something like that.
Or Vegas, and put it all down.
Sure, sure. Put it all down on block, you know. Whereas with Pace, the project, the money is actually never given to the actual property owner. It's paid directly to that contractor after the project has been signed off, all the necessary permits have been closed, and that property owner has said that, hey, this project is done, it's satisfied, and everything's running and operational in my home.
What's the max term you can repay on?
It all depends on the property life of what you're looking at. I mean, if you're doing a roof, it's 20 years. You know, it depends on the property. We can't obviously, you know, give you anything over the max life of use of whatever the Pace project is.
What type of interest rates are they?
It varies from each of our companies. I mean, I think we're...
We're not getting into that debate, I was just curious.
It's about between five and eight.
Between five and eight, depending on the program.
The program, the length of term, and all that.
And all of the federal tax credits that are available for all of these improvements, you would get right up front.
Yes.
Once they're installed, the homeowner can take...
Correct.
Whatever tax credit may be available.
Correct, whatever is available for them, correct.
You can just take right up front.
Yes.
That's pretty cool. I appreciate it. Does anyone else have any questions for them?
And I think of all of the providers here, I am the most local. I actually grew up in East Orlando, so I will be your local representative.
You guys should just all wear T-shirts and do advertising.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. We actually work pretty congenially, the four of us that are here, and I think Patrick has met with us, and, you know, we want you guys to actually open up to all four, because it gets a better product.
As I said, my neighbor speaks highly of the program. He's taken advantage of it, I think, in some of the communities.
We'll make sure to let him know to not bother you after tonight.
It's all good.
Thank you so much for your time, Commissioner.
The best email I ever sent them was the one that says it's on the agenda on October 2nd, so...
Thank you.
Alrighty, well, we do appreciate it. Is there anything else with the good of the order? Because the motion on the table is to adopt. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Everybody, thank you for coming up. Sorry the meeting went a little late.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the reservation.
Our pleasure. Alrighty, I have had a request to take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll get into the next item on the agenda. Alrighty, here we go. Alrighty, we called the meeting back to order. It's a few minutes of nine, excuse me, and we are going to move on to a discussion item, item number 24, which is appointments to the City Public Arts Board. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, on August 7th, you adopted ordinance number 1653, which created the city's public arts program. Part of that ordinance was the creation of a public arts board. This is a seven-member board. Six of the members are appointed by council. The seventh is an ex officio member from the city council. There are six positions. You have 12 applicants, actually, you have 13 applicants. There is an applicant that's on your dais tonight. The terms, they will serve a three-year term, so the terms would commence tonight, then expire on December 31st in 2020. The interest forms were provided with your agenda package, and so we await to your selections for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Alright, we have a board to fill, many applicants, and generally, the easiest way to get through this is we take the nominations from the dais. I go through each seat, one at a time, and then we end up with our board. However, looking at some of the talent that we have here, going through these applications, I wanted to ask the council a question before we started. We set the board at six. You know, how we pick that number, I'm not quite sure, but, you know, I was counting through everything here, and the way I see it, if we made the board 11, with no member of council, make it an independent board, that, you know, we can get some darn good talent on this board. So, before we start nominating and deciding and going back and forth, what does the council think of that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was actually going to say, you know, I didn't think about the 11, that's not a bad idea, but certainly, I think the member of council, we'd have to amend the ordinance, because it's written that way, but I think, I don't think we need a member of council on this board. I would rather, as you said, there is some, I mean, as long as I've been here, I don't think I've ever seen quite so much talent in one, you know, board for people trying to get on. So I like the idea, but, you know, yeah, the member of council, I don't think needs to be there.
Anybody else?
My only concern is that if it gets too big, it may be difficult to get, when we were just doing the committee, as the ex officio member of council on that, we could not get enough people to show up. If we make it bigger, people may feel like, oh, well, somebody else will always show up, so I can show up even less. So I think it's important, before we even get into this process, that we make sure that all of the applicants know that if you're appointed to this, there will be meetings, and if you don't show up, I would hope that this board would take note of that, and we would make timely replacements to make sure that we've got an active public arts board.
Well, I'm curious, Mr. Cobb, we have attendance requirements for the LPA board. Do we have attendance requirements for this board?
No, sir, there aren't written into the ordinance. We would have to prepare, we could prepare a separate rules package, you know, administrative rules for it, but currently, no, the only requirement is that you have a maximum of seven members. That's the only requirement right now.
A maximum?
Yes, sir. The ordinance states that there'd be a maximum of seven members, six with...
And it doesn't necessarily have to be 11, it could be nine. I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at...
Well, there's 13 total.
Hmm?
There's 13 listed.
Well, you know, I just see a lot of talent here, and I would hate to exclude somebody because we've limited ourselves to six. I could see more than six, that would be, and I see some of the applicants here. If everyone's an applicant, can you stand, so that way we know you're here? One, two, three.
I'd love to see, these three, can we say we'd like, of these three, to be on now, and then we figure out the rest of the numbers as the discussion progresses?
I was sort of kind of going that way, so you read my mind. What does council think of that? We have three members who actually took the time to show up.
Mr. Mayor?
Good idea.
Yes?
I agree, and that we appoint, and that would be Lisa Ramsey.
Right.
Melissa Cilio.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Jennifer.
And Genevieve Frewett. That they would be appointed.
Welcome back, Genevieve.
Yeah.
You must, you must miss this. I was going to have you do a presentation earlier, just for, you know, old-time sakes, but... Alrighty, so there is a... Yeah, nomination, thank you. Getting late. The nomination for the three just mentioned by the deputy mayor and by the council member, they're all in agreement? Say aye?
Aye.
Alright, so there we go, we got three. Thank you, everyone, for coming down. Thank you, everyone, for coming down, and thank you for wanting to serve. We do appreciate it. Alright, so that takes care of three. So let's cross those off my list here. Where is... That's Lisa. Lisa, you were the handwritten one afterwards. Sorry about that confusion. Clerk told me and told all of us. So glad that we were able to take care of it for you. Alright, so now the question becomes, we have three slots filled. Do we want to fill three more? Do we want to fill four more, five more? And expand the board a little bit? Because, council member, you made a great point. You know, sometimes people get into these and then they kind of drop off. You know, we don't have to reappoint. I mean, we can always readjust. But, I mean, just crossing out what we have here, I see some talent here. So what's, what does council think?
I can see three more that I think would be great. So if...
Well, you got three, but couldn't you see five?
I could see five, yeah. But I, I'd like to see Brian Smith on there, Margie Sloan, Frederick Kruger, and Ken Barr. So we've got four more. So that gets us to seven. So we're already exceeding the number we can have between talent and showing up, not necessarily here tonight, but at different events around the community.
Well, those are all my choices, but I think we need to, or let's get to a number first and then we'll figure out how we're gonna get to appointments. Councilman Britton, do you have any thoughts to share with us on a number? Do you want to increase the number a little bit? Do you want to keep it at six?
No, I think we can expand it. Who was the four that Megan just said? Brian, Margie, Kruger?
Yeah, Frederick Kruger, Kenneth Barr.
Kenneth Barr.
Margie Sloan, Brian Smith.
You know, I don't know Mr. Kruger or Mr. Barr, but I read the resumes and I had those four picked out that you just mentioned. I had them all picked out anyway, so...
Yes, Mr. Greed, anything? Nope?
Well, the only... Mr. Cobb, you just talked about changing the ordinance, but one point that I was just thinking of may help you and it may not, maybe not.
No, let us know.
If you appoint one more member, you have a working committee because you have a quorum. So all you need is one more right now to have a committee that works. Because you have...
Right, or we can appoint, we could pick a number, appoint them. They won't technically be appointed until you bring the resolution back to us, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which could come back in two weeks.
We would have to, it'll be first reading in two weeks and then public hearing after that.
But in actuality, if we had first reading, we could operate under the pending ordinance doctrine and you could go ahead and do your appointments. And by the time you got around to your second hearing, you would have...
Right, they can have their first meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we could pick a number and operate under those rules? If we so desire?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so Keith, you'd like to expand a little. Bob, what are you thinking?
I was looking at Justin Morrison.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll, we'll...
Well, I...
We'll get the nominations. I'm trying to get to a number.
Seven.
Everybody follow along.
Seven or nine?
Nine, nine.
Nine, okay, nine.
Alright, so Megan, you agree with nine?
I'm okay with nine. I think seven is a more manageable number and that's a...
But some folks will drop off. I think...
But that's what I'm concerned about, making it so big that people think, eh, I can be the dropout.
Well, let's see what happens.
Okay.
Keith, how many people are on the Parks and Rec board? That one was huge.
Yeah, that's 12 or 13, but I don't know. Drew, it's kind of dying on the vine until we can reinvigorate it, Drew.
Alrighty, well, I have a suggestion of nine from the my right-hand side of the dais. Deputy Mayor, what are you thinking?
Nine is fine.
Alright, so nine. Councilman Britton, what are you thinking? Nine?
Nine's good.
But no, no member of council, correct? Did we agree on that yet?
I think that's positive, to get council out of it. Because we don't want to be deciding what's our.
Okay, I was gonna go up and down the dais with that question, but it seems like it was asked already. So Councilman Britton, do you agree with no offici... ex officiado a member of council?
Absolutely, yes.
Alrighty, Deputy Mayor said yes?
Yes.
Yes.
See, that's the advantage of sitting in the middle. I don't have to say anything now. But I would agree with that. We have enough to do. Who's gonna be the staff member handling this, though? Is there a staff member who's gonna be present at this?
It'll be handled through Development Services.
Jennifer Viva?
Yeah, she's there.
You're it. I think we found our chairwoman. There you go. Alright, so we have three members, and we are going to increase it to nine. We'll have a resolution in two weeks increasing it to nine. So now, let's see if we can get some members on board. So bear with me a second here while I get some paper and we work through this process. We've got six more to go. So I will... Let's see if we can get some consensus on anything going on here. Councilmember, I'll start with you. Who are you looking at?
Could we do Ken Barr, Frederick Kruger, and Brian Smith, just to have three guys to go with the three girls?
Alright, so hang on a second. Ken Barr. Frederick. Who's a much better photographer than a bowler, I will say that.
And some of his photography, like the right back here, that picture was taken by Frederick. He's at all the events.
So you want three men to balance out the three...
The three lovely ladies.
Who was the other one? Brian Smith?
Brian Smith, yes. And he's the reason why this all got started.
Yeah, that one's kind of... Alright, let me, let's start with the easy one. How about, I'll look for consensus on Brian Smith. All who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that five? Okay, I'm looking for five on everything right now. Alright, so let me add to my list. We've got Brian Smith, we've got Lisa Ramsey. Okay. Now... We have a nomination of Ken Barr. Is there a second on that nomination? Alrighty, I won't call the question on Ken at this moment. We have a nomination of Frederick Kruger. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Let's see if we have consensus. What is the consensus on Frederick Kruger? Or who? Want Frederick on the board? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was that five?
That was five.
Okay. Alrighty. One, two, three. Alright, so now we got five. We've got four more to go.
I'll nominate Margie Sloan.
Alrighty.
I'll second that.
Okay. Hang on a second, guys. Let me just get it on paper here. Alright, so we have a nomination of Margie Sloan. All in favor of that nomination, since it was first and seconded, please signify by saying aye.
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 That was five again?
Yes.
I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry. It's usually Bob and Megan I can hear. Alright, so Margie Sloan is on.
I'll make a nomination for Justin Morrison.
Hang on a second, please, let me count. One, two, three, four, five, six. So we're at six. We have three more to go. Alrighty, I'm sorry, what was the nomination?
Justin Morrison.
Any second? Okay, we're gonna hang on to Justin there for a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a nomination for Bethany Miller.
There's a second? Alrighty, Bethany's gonna hang on for a second.
I'll second her.
Oh, we got a second. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second for Bethany Miller. Oh, well, that's a heck of a resume.
She's got some resume. She really does.
She does. Alright. We have motion and a second. Let me see if there is consensus on Bethany Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five guys? That was all eight? Keith, I couldn't hear you again, I'm sorry. You were the seconder, I'm assuming.
Unless you hear me say no, I'm saying aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Hang on a second. I have seven. Do you think this is easy? It's like herding cats. I got seven.
How about Jillian Marini?
Go back to the guy. On principle, I will second a guy at this point.
Right, just relax. Just relax. We have, who was it?
Jillian.
Jillian Marini, is there a second?
I'll second her.
Alright, so we have a second on Jillian Marini. Let's stick up.
Well, here's my thought on this. They're both from Songbirds. The guy and the girl. It would probably round out the board better to... Like, I hate to do it on basis of gender, but if we have nine applica... Yeah, we're gonna have no more than how many guys even applied to this? We need to have...
We haven't put Justin. Isn't Justin...
Justin works as a...
Justin and Jillian are the same, aren't they?
Yes, they're engaged.
Yeah, they're similar.
Well, I meant, I meant they're, they have the same background.
Yes, very similar. So I think that the board would be better rounded with Justin on there.
Well, there's a motion and a second right now on the board for Jillian.
Right, but I would assume we wouldn't want to put both on.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
And I'm not sure I would be comfortable with putting both.
Well, no, no, I wouldn't want to, no, I mean, I, I'll... One or the other.
One or the other. So who's, who, well, let's forget gender. Who has the better...
They're, they're very similar, it looks like, with their, with their qualifications.
They both are, really, huh?
Yeah, they're very, very similar. I wish either of them would have shown up tonight.
Well... Alright, let's see if we can get consensus on, on one of them. Let me just ask. Keith, do you have a preference? Would you prefer to round the board out, gender-wise, or do you see a better applicant between the two? Because it seems like we want one of the two.
I have no preference.
Alrighty, Deputy Mayor, what are you thinking?
We're picking the color of drapes here.
No one's helping me.
Can we flip a coin? Because I hate to do it based on gender. It's a terrible thing, especially for the only female on council. I know, so I'm the only female on council. Let's flip a coin.
No, we're not flipping a coin.
Yeah, not, we can't do it based on gender.
Well, I, I was asking for...
Who do you think's more qualified?
I was asking for Justin.
Yeah, that was your first choice.
Yeah, that was my first choice. I can, I can...
You did nominate Justin a while ago.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
But even second, we got Melissa's already nominated in second.
You mean, you mean Jillian?
Yeah, that's right. We can, we can... This one's a little different situation. Alrighty, so let's go back to Justin. Is there a second for Justin from anyone?
I'll second him.
Alright, we have a motion. Well, not really a motion. We have nomination and a second. Alrighty, let's call the vote. All in favor of Justin, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was five. Alright.
You got one more.
Do we?
Well, that gets us to seven.
Who's my, who's my eighth? I don't know. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, I do have eight. I'm sorry.
You have Fred, Brian, Margie, Justin, Bethany.
I got them. They're eight, they're eight. We have one more.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Webb.
Alrighty, well, since we're picking one more, why aren't we, why isn't anybody looking at Karen Dom?
She lives in the city. That's my only reservation about Jennifer Webb coming back. She's phenomenal, but we already have one non-resident on here and that would be Frederick Kruger. I'm not sure how many non-City of Oviedo residents.
I haven't nominated one all night. I'd like to nominate Karen Dom.
Okay.
Who?
Karen Dom.
I'll second that.
Motion, we have a second. Well, motion, we have a nomination and a second. Any other discussion? Alrighty, all in favor of Karen Dom? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We've got our board. There they are. Got nine of them. Congratulations, everybody, and thank you all for applying. Thank you all for coming down. We really do truly appreciate it. And go forth and art. Now, I did put something on Facebook, and so before you all leave, we need that Oviedo, you know, with the words. Did anybody see that? That was awesome. They had it over in Spain. It was Oviedo, it was on a big pedestal. They had it in their downtown. People were hanging on it, taking pictures on it. For me, that should be your first item. Go knock it out. I think Dr. Korea, I sent her the picture of it.
And remember, you're completely unfunded, so fundraising falls to you as well.
That is, that is true. No, I think we have a small fund.
It did not work out. I've been trying. But am I correct that there's no funding currently in the budget? I'm pretty sure...
1% of the capital improvement program for certain.
Well, going forward, but at this time, it's gone as a fund.
I mean, as of this one...
Yes, as of right now.
Don't worry about that. We're not gonna let you fail. Go do good things. See you all later. Safe home.
Thank you for coming.
The funding will work out. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Cobb, I'm assuming somebody wrote down all the nominations?
I got them.
Okay. And we'll bring back an ordinance making it nine. And then when we first read it, you can get the group together.
Yes.
I hate doing those things. Alright, moving right along. City managers report. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I was contacted by the Chamber of Commerce. Because of the hurricane, they had to move their ovations awards ceremony to Thursday night. And they notified us that they have tickets available. And I didn't know if any members of council were interested in attending. The city is up for some of the awards. Recreation Department, we do have two Recreation Department representatives attending, but I didn't know if either of you wanted to attend as well. If you do, let us know and we'll get you a ticket.
Where's it at?
It is at...
Tuskamaw County Club.
Yes.
6:30, I think?
Oh, yeah.
Right, is it 6:30?
It's 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM.
No, I purchased a ticket already, so I'm good.
Oh, did you? Okay. And the other thing I had for you, council, is tomorrow night is Oviedo Night Out, our National Night Out. So I thought I would have Chief come up and just tell you about that.
Chief, I know National Night Out is really a police department thing, but I gotta ask a question today. Are the fire trucks coming out to visit?
I'll have to ask Chief White that.
I gotta ask the question today because I think on the agenda, they're not listed. So one of the neighborhoods...
Just bring it, Dawn.
They typically do.
Have to ask Chief Buchanan about that.
Want me to call him now or wake him up? I'm sorry, Chief, go ahead.
That's quite all right.
Not trying to steal your thunder.
We run a team here, so you're not stealing anybody's thunder. Tuesday night is National Night Out. We've got a number of neighborhoods that are participating. Oviedo Park Sanctuary, Chapman Cove, Chapman Grove, Oviedo Park Sanctuary, Chapman Cove, Chapman Grove, Oviedo Town Center, Riverside, Preserves at Lake Charm, Johnson Hill, Live Oak Reserve, and Lake Charm, and I believe LFA Woods is also on that list. Hopefully, those people come out and, you see, we'll be out there, activities, meet the officers, K-9 will be out.
Which kind? The friendly one, or the mean one?
All of them.
All of them.
Is the one from Jackson Heights coming?
I, I believe Bailey will be out there someplace.
Bailey Rocks.
We love Bailey. What, I don't even know the officer's name who has Bailey, but-
Officer Hanau.
Yeah. Nobody knows his name.
No, no one knows him, they just know Bailey.
They just know Bailey.
So hopefully, everybody will come out and, and have a good evening, and the only other thing I have to add is Wednesday is Coffee with a Cop at McDonald's from nine o'clock until, I think it's eight o'clock until 11:00.
I'm Mitchell Hammack.
I'm Mitchell Hammack.
Oh, that's awesome. And then, wait, 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 come back, come back. Saturday, you got an event, too?
Yeah, Saturday is the Oviedo Police Foundation's bowling tournament. We always have a good time, and all the council members have a team.
Yes, we do.
And planning on winning it again.
Yes, we're gonna win it, you know.
We won the first time, and then we brought in ringers last year.
I didn't bring in any ringers. I, I was on a team that did not win, so I didn't bring in ringers.
And after last week, I'm ready for them, so you can tell them I'm ready.
Pulled a 650 series last week.
Ready for them.
So, it's always a good fundraiser for the Oviedo Police Foundation. This year, we've kind of outgrown, the Oviedo Bowling now has 24 lanes, so we're moving over to Broadway over on Colonial.
How many teams do you have in this year?
Uh, I have not heard an update. Last I did hear, we had upwards of 24 teams, but I didn't get a final count.
All right, so they'll be, they'll end up being more, because you had walk-ins last year, too.
We did have some walk-ins, there's, there's a lot of raffle prizes, and it's always a good time. Even if you can't bowl, it, it's a lot of fun.
Well, we take it too seriously. That's our problem.
Well, I have a lot of teams that take it seriously.
Yeah, what's, uh, yeah. Detective Clueless.
Yeah, you tell Rager bringing in the ringers.
That's right.
We know all of, we heard all about the ringers.
Rager's bringing in the ringers.
Uh, registration's at 2:30, bowling starts at 3:00.
You guys tell Rager that we're coming after them, ringers or not. You let him know. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, you still have it?
Uh, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Cobb, we're very sorry to hear about your grandmother, also.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're going up tomorrow, you said?
We're going up tomorrow.
We are truly sorry to hear that. Mr. Groot?
I have nothing to say to Mr. Cobb.
Oh, all righty. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Pollak, you're up. No reports, acceptable. Nope, not getting away with it, am I?
Um, I just wanted to bring up, I know that we've all had comments, or, you know, people have sent us comments about the debris cleanup, but, I mean, our, our team over here, our Public Works led by Bobby, and, and then the Parks and Recs, Drew's team, have done an outstanding job of, of picking up the slack when we, when we were losing these contractors, and I really appreciate all, all that you're doing for us, and, and just want to make sure that, that, that you relay that back to your team, that we really, really appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
Oh, we will definitely figure out something for that, Chief.
And then Oktoberfest this past weekend was a, was a great event, and it was a fun time. And then there was the Palm Tree 21 Years, it's, you know, that they've been around here, and they had an event, and that was, that was nice. And then, there was another thing, it was on social media, about bears, and the, the whole thing kind of went a little crazy, but there was one thing that came about, actually, it was, it was in a thread about, there's, I guess, a bear-friendly community. There's some certification on bear-friendly, I, I don't, I, I don't know if that's a possibility, I, I don't know how that-
Actually, she was gonna send me information on it. I don't think that I've gotten it just yet, Bob, so once I do, I'll get it shared with everybody.
Yeah, I think-
Are, are Oviedo residents eligible to get the county bear-proof trash cans? I, I, my understanding from the chamber meeting was they, they are. No?
That's only that side of the county.
Okay.
So-
Do they work with the republic trucks?
No.
But the, the bear-proof ones with the finger latch?
They're, they're working on, on bear-proof cans that will actually work with that. Patrick and I attended the, when, when the bears were wandering around in Kingsbridge West, the, the HOA contacted us, and we had FWC come down. Now, Brian, you and I have seen that, that presentation two or three times, and Patrick, I know Chief has seen it, and, you know, it's quite interesting when you go to the site and you watch their, their presentation about the bears. You know, first, the bears are more scared of us than they are, we are of them. The bears actually can travel 100 miles. That's why they don't pick them up and relocate them, because they'll just come back. And the, the bear population has exploded, so what's happening is you have mothers giving birth to usually at least two cubs, and then those two cubs, if I remember, it was a year and a half that they, they stay with mom, and then mom basically kicks them out, and when mom kicks them out, now you've got three bears looking for their own territory in the same area. And like Chief said about the food sources, subdivisions become the easiest spot for food, so that's why they, they come in to us. And, and when you see the presentation, maybe we'll have them come down. Why don't you work on that? Get them down here, and then we can invite the neighborhoods who are having the issues, but, you know, when, when, when you see the presentation, what they, they have caught the bears doing on video, I mean, it, it's kind of funny. You know, they, they sneak into garages, they go onto back doors and knock. There was one bear, right? This one bear would go into a neighborhood and, and literally knock on everyone's sliding glass door. He, he just knew that if he knocked, somebody was feeding him, or her. And, so the thing on the video, we just, you'd see it go to every door and basically knock, or butt its head, or whatever it was doing. But to prove how scared they really are of us, they, they, one of the rangers went up in a tree stand, and the bear came climbing up the ladder, up the tree stand, and then the ranger looked over the edge and said, "Boo," and the thing just ran off. So, it's, it's, it's an interesting presentation, because it's not what everybody thinks. They, they just, they, they wander around. Like Chief said, if you don't give them food, they'll, they'll keep on moving along. But the garage they ripped apart, that's a funny one to see. Bear got into the garage, because they, people kept their dog and cat food in there in big 50-pound bags, just had a good old time.
Delicious.
Well, if they kept their doors locked and the garage doors closed.
They put their valuables away. I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to hijack, but Patrick, they-
That's, that's all I have.
Since the rest of the members haven't seen it, it would be great. I, I forgot the, I have her card at, at home. Do you still have her, the woman's card? Okay. Yeah, that, that's an interesting presentation to see. Anything else? Steve, you're up.
All right, folks, sorry to keep you so late tonight. That was a long agenda, but I'll be brief, and we'll get you out of here quick. You know, with, with all the cleanup that we've had, and the expense that the city had, I wanted to run this by council and see if you guys will just have Brian, maybe, and I spoke to Brian this afternoon about this, but our old advocate up in Washington, D.C., who was very successful for us for many years, and then because of the budget cuts, we had to, we had to move away from that contract, sent an email asking if we need help with FEMA. They are very plugged in, and FEMA is not easy to deal with, so what I would, wanted to ask the consensus of council is just to have Brian to reach out to our old advocate up in Washington, Skip and Jim Davenport, and see what it would be to get them back in, because we have laid out quite a bit of our own money with our own staff that may or may not be reimbursable, but having somebody plugged in that close, and having the track record that they've had in the past, I think would be worthwhile. So I'd like to know how much it would be to put them back on, even if it's for a year, but what we stand to gain back, you know, because this is a couple hundred thousand dollars that we're probably laying out on our own for our own cleanup, so I think they might be able to assist us well, and they have a good track record, so if council would, you know, just have the consensus to Brian to reach out to them, see what it is, bring something back to us, and see if we could possibly move that way.
Before I ask council, Brian, have you reached out to them at all yet? I know they sent the email inviting us to.
Not yet.
Is there consensus from council, just to see what they can do and cost?
Yes.
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 I don't mind finding out, but the rules are what they are, and I know that, that Chief White and White and his team aren't gonna follow the rules, and if we follow them, we get the money and the reimbursement. If we don't-
The audit process is horrendous with that.
Well, it's the document, yeah, it's the documentation, and either we've done the documentation correctly, or we have not. And we can hire somebody out to do the documentation, but I'm, I'm hope, are we doing it correctly?
Patrick's going, Washington did not work that way.
Patrick, when you were at the congressman's office, I seem to remember, we had about a million-dollar bill floating out there. How many years did you work on that bill just to get us back 450,000 of it? 500,000?
We started working here in January 1, 2013.
Right.
There are so many cities asking-
You should've seen what we went through with Charlie.
Yeah. There are so many cities that are asking, and to have somebody plugged in at that level and be there for what it might cost, for what we are gonna recoup, in my mind, because I've, I've already seen it happen through the years when we had them, they're very effective, so I mean, it doesn't hurt to get them-
Yeah, there's enough consensus. We can talk about it more later.
We're not deciding anything tonight, we'll do-
Not that, we'll, we'll cross that when we come. And, and again, the, the staff, you know, coming up with that idea, these guys are just, the City of Oviedo staff is just incredible. I mean, they're cleaning up neighborhoods like, I mean, they're, they're better than the FEMA contractors. I mean, heads up to all of them, pass our regards on to them. Las Vegas, the, the whole city, we're sending our prayers out to Las Vegas, what a nightmare that was. It just seems like there's one of them every other month, and it's just, you know, as Chief would always say, you know, the good Lord comfort those people out in Las Vegas, they need it. And then finally, Chief, I'm not gonna cry, because we're beyond that, but, I mean, it's just very strange to me that you won't be sitting here at the next meeting, but one thing I know about this man, loves the city as much as, as anybody does, and he's gonna be there when we need him. I got, I got him on my cell, everybody else does, but Chief, enjoy your retirement. You know, time is, is always precious, and you got your health, and that's good. Go take as many trips as you need to do, but we know you're a phone call away, so, I mean, exceptional job, 40-some-odd years, you know, and like I said, I don't mind saying it, that is the best chief that will ever be in this city's history, right there. No one's gonna come close, so congratulations, my good man.
Great job. Who am I gonna call when helicopters are up in the air? Hey, Dale, you, you will get phone calls at like 1:00 in the morning, so just be prepared.
Dale, we love you too, but those are big shoes to fill.
You, you have big shoes to fill.
Big shoes.
They are big shoes.
You're on Facebook, right?
I'm saying it.
Uh, that's what Heather's for. Heather's on Facebook. Steve, anything else?
No, I'm just saying, but we will be in good hands with, with Dale and his team and everything, so the city won't miss a beat, and the chief will be a phone call away if they need him.
Well, and let's not forget, homegrown.
Homegrown.
That's right.
Absolutely.
30-some-odd years with us, correct?
31 this month.
31 years this month, the man started here, and now he's gonna become the chief.
Chief Coleman.
So, well, I don't know if that's been official yet. Are we jumping ahead of things, Brian? Just a little bit?
We, we did all we could do, Dale.
Dale, we're out of it now. You know how the charter is. It's up to him. But you're there, right, Brian? Okay, just checking.
Wow.
Uh, Steve, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it, Mayor.
All righty, Megan, you're up. We're getting silly, it's getting, you know.
Women and men of the Public Works Department, you guys are rock stars. Parks and Rec, same thing, you're helping pick up stuff and putting on events like Oktoberfest. One thing I, I would like to make sure we do going forward is make all the events feel welcoming, and one of the, one of those ways to welcome is you make, make the fifth-grade dances, or whatever specialty dances, feel accessible to people of all socioeconomic backgrounds. So, upping this to $25 per person, it, it just kind of, there's other ways to address the issue of too many people coming to the dance, we could do a lottery, there's, there's some online things where people could just submit their names, and it's picked out by a computer or something. So, just wanted to throw that out there as something to think about, maybe get some consensus from here to, in, in future fee schedules, consider, to democratize that, and also see if we can greatly reconfigure the way we address parking, to show up to Oviedo on the Park to a publicly-owned parking facility, and then be told it's $5 to park there, but if you go around the corner, it's free, that's not a very welcoming thing to come to a park where you feel like, well, we pay all these taxes, and we're having this event on taxpayer, you know, we're, we're only getting back 50 cents on the dollar at these events, at best. And, and it's just such a piddly thing, I don't know how much we make off of this $5. What is it? Is it better than 50 cents on the dollar?
We, uh, maybe a hundred.
So, we didn't need to charge for parking, then?
That's part of it. That's part of it. Parking's part of everything. Things are all free.
Well, it, it left a little bit of a bad taste in a few people's mouth.
But doesn't that meet your initiative of people bringing their bicycles?
It, it does, it discourages, but we need to publicize.
Ride a bike, and you don't have to pay the bus fare.
I, I rode a bike.
That's, that's a great point, we should charge parking all the way up and down Oviedo Boulevard, then.
Oh, goodness, guys.
That would meet your goal.
We just want to make everybody feel welcome, make it accessible, so there was a little bit of a reconfiguration of the preferred seating space on Saturday before things really got going. Everybody was sitting outside of preferred seating, and we sort of just kind of eliminated it, except for the part where you sit, so hoping that we can continue stuff that makes everybody feel like it's accessible. Also, try out a golf bike. Guys, you have got to try the golf bike. It is the greatest thing ever. I have been attempting to-
Excuse me, just one second. I hate you.
So I've been talking this up to Charles Lacy, and saying, you know, look, if you commit that you will ride the golf bike at all the tournaments.
Charles Lacy to ride a golf bike?
He's a little skeptical, but he has not said no yet, so I'm hoping that everybody here will, will kind of get on board with the idea, maybe we try them out. They have offered the golf course a buy, buy four of them now, if you don't like them, and they're not working out, in six months, you can give them back, give it a full refund. So, that's kind of floating out there, and, and I hope that, I, I think Councilmember Britton probably golfs the most of any of us, I hope you will consider riding on one of the golf bikes sometime.
I'd rather have a Segway with a golf cart.
A Segway? I've heard that those are out there. Nick was telling me about that. That's it, though, thank you.
If we could get Diane back and get both mayors on golf bikes?
I have no interest in a golf bike. I ride my bike all over the place.
They have big fat wheels, they, they're so comfortable. More comfortable than my bike, and it's pretty comfy.
Actually, I couldn't believe how heavy your bike was. I had to move it the other night at an event because a car was getting out. My gosh.
50 pounds.
I thought that was a heavy bike. Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Keith, you're up.
Okay, I think we've covered all the, all the events. Chief, I want to wish you the best, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. I remember when we hired you, and I'm regretting you retiring. Wish you were around longer. So, and Dale, good luck to you, I think.
Yeah, we're still a little fuzzy on that, Dale.
Okay. Uh, let's see, there's a council meeting Wednesday that I'll go to, and it's a briefing at the school board, so that, that's always a, a very informative event, so I'll bring back whatever they, they serve up. And just for information purposes, I do have to travel on the 15th, so I will not be here on the 16th. I gotta go to California for a business trip, so.
Okay.
Duly informed.
Thank you. Anything else, Keith?
That's it.
Just real quick, oh, Drew, yes, Oktoberfest was a blast. It was, it was very well-attended. Great job by everybody. And some of the points that council member brought up, I mean, you and I have had the same discussions. So, you know, I realize that you're looking at cost recovery and things like that, but I do have to agree, you know, roping off that big area and charging for parking, whether it's by us or somebody renting our park to use the facility, I mean, that's a public lot. So we got to figure out what you do there. I realize that you do sell some sponsorships, and you do need to reserve some parking, but to reserve some parking up at the front of the lot and leaving the rest of the lot open to the public, I mean, there's ways around this. I'm sure we can get there. But overall, great event. And next year, I guess you're already in the planning stages? Great? Great. Few more food vendors next year, is what Terry told me. Get the, what was the group when you used to do it up by, when you used to close off Oviedo Boulevard? Before Oviedo Boulevard went through, you used to do it at the end there. Was that the German-American Society or something? Oh, all right, so they saw how successful it was. Maybe we'll get them there next year. Another big tent up in the front there, you know, beer tent, an actual, you know.
And one-day versus two, I think there's a lot to be said for that. I think the sponsors and the vendors might kind of like a one-day event.
Actually, I thought the two-day event was fantastic because it gave people, there were different people there from Saturday and Sunday. I spent, I was out there Sunday, and I was out there a little bit on Saturday, but there was a whole different group of people there on Sunday. I don't know. That one, I might disagree with you.